Is there any change? Has been given. I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. If we would rise for the invocation. Lord, guide us through these times. Wednesday was an example of great joy and great sorrow. The mystery of what, of how life unfolds and how we are to handle it can only be answered by, by listening to your guidance and trying to make sure that we keep our eyes focused on doing the greatest good for our, our friends and neighbors and our people. Please be with the family of those who are suffering under these times, especially the families of, of the lady who was killed and certainly the children. Keep them in your heart, keep them in, in your mind. Help them come through this tragedy. And we also pray for your guidance as we do the people's business. Certainly, we want to make sure that we hear everything that our constituents have to say and we act in accordance with our oaths in the best interest of our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen. Now for the pledge.
I pledge to Jesus, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to our roll call.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Next on our agenda is approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion related to our agenda this evening? Commissioner Johnson.
Move to approve the agenda as written.
Motion been made for the approval of this evening's agenda as written. Are there any comments or questions? Oops, seeing none. Commissioner Johnson, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington. Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda this evening are comments from the public. Are there any members of the public who would like to come forward and make any comments? If so, when you come up, please come up to the podium. Make sure that the button is pushed so that the collar around the microphone is illuminated green. State your name and begin your statement. So with that, is there anyone who would wish to comment tonight? Please come forward.
My name is Jo, Jo Vita Masek, and I'm here, I have information for the commissioners that demonstrates I paid my property taxes on time. I am respectfully requesting an opportunity to present my case to you since I was able to do so at the February 8th meeting.
Okay. Ms., would you say that last part again that you kind of faded away on me?
I'm asking to present my case to you since I was unable to do so at the February 8th meeting.
Okay. Mr. Counselor, is there any recourse that, that the commission has related to this item?
And I apologize, I didn't catch the name. Was, was this matter on last week?
Yes, it was.
Okay, was it voted on last week?
It was voted on and the vote was to approve it with the box marked "Denied" marked.
Okay, well, do we happen to know the vote? Was it unanimous, was it split?
No, it was unanimous.
You know, you know which one we're talking about? So, generally speaking, so it's gone up, if it went up last week, was voted on, that's the end of it unless a member of the commission who voted in the majority vote wished to make a motion to reconsider and that would have to be done at this meeting and then it could be reconsidered or tonight or moved to a different meeting.
Right, I'm sorry, so what she was saying was should it, should there be a motion reconsider and that motion prevail, then we would actually do the reconsidering at a future meeting?
Could, yes. Could do it tonight, could do it at a future meeting.
Okay, very good.
But that motion wouldn't need to be made by a sitting member of the commission.
Correct. Okay, Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah, so as I understand, you were not able to be here last week.
Oh, Commissioner, I'm sorry, because.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was she able to be here, she wasn't here last week.
No, no, what I was going to say was because this is, these are comments that are not listed as an item, we don't really get to, am I right on that, Mr. Counselor?
Well.
Or can we inquire of the, of the citizen?
Yeah, it's a public comment section, so the citizen can make comment at any time. So it's not a discussion topic for the commission, but at any time, a commissioner could make a motion to reconsider. And then that motion would be debatable.
Okay, so could she inquire of the, of the citizen for clarification on her statement? Is that?
Maybe to assist in whether or not to make a motion, I think, maybe?
Okay, so.
But as far as like a detailed conversation, I think it's, I think the motion would need to happen sooner because then that motion becomes debatable.
Okay, so once it's debatable, then we have more latitude to discuss, is that what you're saying?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner, but I wanted to kind of clarify the parliamentary point.
You know, I, I do want to say this, and I'm not being argumentative or unkind to anyone, but I have asked two times to be given the statute that specifically deals with this very circumstance of us being able to respond to someone who just comes in cold, if you will. Those, and I'm not a lawyer, as we all know, but in reading those statutes, I have never found the verbiage that says to me, when the customer or taxpayer comes in and makes a comment out of the clear blue, that we cannot respond to that person. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see the statute and hear the wording, maybe I read it wrong, but it didn't read that way to me. It didn't even touch this situation.
Well, not to take, not to take you too far off subject, but we do have a seminar coming up on sunshine law and the thing is.
I read that darn sunshine law. I went from cover to cover.
Yeah.
I did, and I really scrutinized it and I never found that in there anywhere.
There's also case law, so that's where it gets kind of tricky is because you've got the statute, then you've got legal decisions that were made.
I'd still like to see the statute that tells me that.
But.
But at this point, what I need to do then is to make a motion for us to be able to interact with this person.
Let me, let me inquire of counsel to make sure that, because I'm trying to prove, I'm trying to proceed as, as close to the letter of the law as I possibly can and still get the job done.
Sure, I'm with you.
So, Mr. Counselor, is, is that a fair reading that if a commissioner makes a motion and becomes debatable among the commissioners?
I think so. I mean, I think that's, that's the cleanest way to do it tonight, yeah.
How does that impact our ability to inquire of the citizen?
I think once it's on, the, the motion to reconsider would then be debatable and I think you probably could inquire of, of the citizen since.
Okay. If, if it looks like we are straying too far in, in a bad direction, kind of give us a heads up because we certainly want to make sure we stay within the, the letter of the law, but do, do you feel comfortable with that interpretation?
Yes, sir, if I understood him properly. I make a motion that, that we allow the commission to respond to.
I believe you'd be looking for a motion to reconsider 2024-51, I think it was.
Make a motion to reconsider 2024.
Fifty.
Fifty-one?
Was it 51, Administrator? I was pretty sure it was.
Twenty twenty-four fifty-one.
Yeah, I was pretty sure it was. Okay, very good. The motion is on the floor for the reconsideration of 2024-51. And by the way, just for informational purposes, that motion would have to be made at the next like meeting, so it would not have been in order, say, next week, so it is timely, just to, just for whatever background.
Okay.
So with that, Commissioner, you have the floor. If you'd like to talk about this, then I'll go to other commissioners to join the discussion.
I can address my question to it?
Yes, but, yeah, keep it kind of, yeah, just, just kind of ease into it a bit, I guess, so I make sure we're, I'm trying to keep us in between the barriers here.
All right, I understand. So you were not able to come last time, correct?
Was not able.
Okay, all right. And we have all the documentation, correct? You're seeing it at this point?
Last week's agenda.
Okay, so, so then really that's all we can do this time. We can't vote on it.
No, but we could.
But we do have the ability to reconsider it and put it on next week's agenda.
The motion on the table at the moment is to reconsider. If I understand the, the counsel right, we, we could, we could hear it again tonight or we could hear it at a future meeting, whichever, I, is that, is that the right interpretation, Mr. Counselor?
I think you could. I think probably from a staff perspective, I think next week would, would be better to, you know, prepare for the, for the item.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that it might be to our advantage for us to stop and scrutinize it, let staff do the same, and then be able to come in and speak intelligently on it next week.
And there may be more information the citizen would wish to produce, would, would give to us and we would obviously want the time to reconsider whatever information and put that into the calculation.
If that's what the.
If that's where, if that's where we go.
So what do I need to do? Make a motion that, or has?
No, you, you made the motion, so motion is on the table.
Okay.
And so I wanted to give you first chance since you were the maker of the motion. And now my thought is to go through the commissioners who have sought recognition and have discussion, and once that discussion is had, then I will go back to you for final comments and closure before we take a vote.
Okay.
Commissioner Withington, I think you were the first one seeking recognition.
Is it okay to hear the new, the new facts tonight before, because here's the thing, I, we, we all voted unanimously last week.
Yes.
So I don't want to waste anybody's time, you know, and vote yes to reconsider this. I would rather hear what she has to say before we vote to reconsider because it seemed pretty, pretty straightforward last week, they didn't sign the check and it didn't go through. If you want to talk, you can come to the podium and talk.
I'll, I'll take care of that, Commissioner, don't worry. Here's what I'm thinking is, as we have our discussion, I'm going to be asking them to also participate, so if they see, as they see what we are deliberating here, perhaps they could join the discussion and that keeps us, I hope, on the right side of the.
Okay, yeah, so, so I would, before I vote, I would like to hear what their new, their new facts are.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm going to go ahead and we have one more commissioner who's seeking recognition and then I will ask the citizen if they care to make any further comments, but Commissioner Johnson.
On the same note as Commissioner Withington, I'm, I'm just curious if there's any new information that's not already included in the original form that you filled out? Any new information that you have to share with us?
No.
I'm sorry, if you're going to speak, you need to come forward and for the audio recording, you need to identify yourself.
No, there's not, not new information. Can I ask a question or is that okay?
Yeah, let's, let's, I'm, I'm trying to give you as much latitude as possible, but go ahead, let's do that and let's just see where it takes us. And if we run, if we run too deeply into the issue, then we can always back it up, but I think for the moment, that's not a problem.
Okay, and.
Go, go right ahead.
And if I'm over, please let me know because I've never done this before.
Well, and the thing is, you, you would not be out of order because you're the citizen. We are the only ones that have to really worry about those laws and stuff, so you may say pretty much whatever you please.
Oh, that's cool. Sorry, okay. So I do want to mention that Clay County did take the money and in our records and in the addendums you have, Clay County did remove the money from our account and then placed it back in the account before the end of the year, or they took it out before the end of the year. They subsequently put it back into our bank account and our bank account alerted us that happened. And at that time, we talked to Clay County, we came down, we did pay the taxes, but by then it was the next year. So I just want to clarify that because it was removed from the, by the county from our account, so we assumed everything was fine. And then when it went back into our account is when we immediately contacted Clay County to find out what had happened, just to clarify.
I think, I think maybe what they're looking for is to be able to clarify and make their point, perhaps that's maybe another way to put it. I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I don't want to get too deep into an inquiry with, with the citizen.
One clarifying question.
Let me go ahead and put your mic back on.
Thank you. Just a clarifying question, so what you're saying, if I'm hearing you right, is that you paid it, you didn't sign the check, but the bank paid the money anyway?
Clay County, yes.
Paid, the bank paid the money to the county and you're saying the bank did not take it back, but the county gave it back?
Yes.
And it wasn't the bank that decided to take it back? It would have been fine if the county hadn't given it back to the bank. Is that what you're saying?
It would have been fine. Well, I don't understand.
It would have been paid and done.
It would have been paid, yes.
Yeah, so the bank didn't care about your unsigned check, it's the county that decided to send the money back to the bank because the check was not signed, is that correct?
I'm assuming that's what happened, yes.
Okay.
If I could interject, the county and our bank has no control over anybody else's banking account. So what I believe probably happened is her bank ran it through, showed it coming out of her account, realized the check was not signed, put the money back, rejected it, and our bank, the county's bank, got the check back saying that her bank would not give us the money because the check was not signed. We can't, our bank does not go into anybody's account and take the money out. We, our bank presents it to your bank and your bank then processes it in and out of your account. We couldn't have got money out of it and put money back.
And we could not have sent money back?
No.
Okay, that's my question.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Commissioner Wagner since he has not had a chance to, to speak, and then I'm going to go to Commissioner Withington. Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. Kind of along those lines, as I mentioned last week, as we talked about this, to, to further prove that situation, not only was that returned, but then the county received a, a fee of $25 for putting in a check that was not accepted. So, again, the, the issue is not of the county, it is of the bank. And because the, the check came in without a signature, it was the bank's reaction to it, not ours. Respectfully, the fact that the county received a fee of $25 suggests, I mean, we don't charge ourselves 25 bucks, the bank does that. The bank does that because of what they are presented with. So the issue is not one of the county, but one of the bank, and I will also suggest, as I did last week, that the receipt that is received, you'll forgive me for a moment as I try to find it, does say that failure of this payment to clear your financial institution will void this receipt. So I, I, I take no joy in suggesting that there is a fee that is being allotted. No one does. I'm just, what I am saying is it is not the county's position, I believe, that, that we are trying to, to do something nefarious. The fact of the matter is, it's not a matter of the county taking your money and giving it back, it is, the county is receiving a check that goes to the bank, it is up to the bank to accept it. And if it does not accept it, they charge us and, and the money gets returned. So I, I, I mean, there is a process here and there is other, other points in this process beyond the county that is involved with it. But we can't tell the bank, "Accept this check." We, we, we can't do that. And in fact, in this case, they did not and they charged us for it. Thank you, that's all I wanted to add.
Commissioner Withington, you're recognized? Oh, hold on a second, I'm sorry, let me get your mic on. Go ahead and just speak. There you are, now you're on.
Wait, how did you, I know you wrote a check, but how did you, how did you deliver the check? Did you come here and talk to the, so somebody at the front desk or did you mail it in or how did you pay it?
Yeah, if you would, come forward and identify yourself for the audio recording and then, and make your statement.
Tony Leonardo, what happened was we come into the courthouse and I did go up to front desk and talked to James and he said, "Just drop it in the box." I dropped it in the box, looked on my account and it showed that it went through, that you took the money out of my account. The next day, I looked on my account and it showed that it was put back in. I go to Commerce Bank, talked to the bank president, and at that point, he says, "They're trying to run it again." They froze my account. They said, "This is very odd." His exact words was, "Clay County is the one who put the money back into the account." Now, I don't know if Clay County is the same bank as that I do, that that just happened that way. My, my thing of it is that my bank released the money out of my account. And as a taxpayer, to me, that relinquished my duties at that time, especially with a paid receipt that was mailed to me two days after that, that it went through. So I'm not denying that we don't need anything back on the taxes. What I'm here to talk about is that we came in and the money left my account before the end of the year. And then the money was put back in from either your establishment or the other bank, but I'm saying, that's my point, I did my due diligence and, and paid that at that point.
So when you came into the front desk, where was it, how was the check, did you have the check? In your hand, was it in an envelope?
It was in an envelope with our, our coupon. And the lady there said, "Just put it in there," after I talked to James.
And was it sealed, the envelope was sealed?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so.
See, I can understand if my bank did not, because it was not signed, did not take the money out, then I would be at fault. But with the money leaving my account and going into your account, that releases me to, in my mind legally, that I paid my taxes. Because I checked my account the next day and it showed that it went through. And I have that in the documentation on the account when it went through.
Diana, is there any way to check with our bank to find out if we did take the money and then re, put it back in?
We can try and find out, but again, you know, if you think about the transaction, if, if the money came out of his account and came to our bank, meaning his check cleared and we got the money, our bank would have not, they wouldn't have cared, right? Because his bank honored it and gave us the money into our account, we would not have returned the money. Our bank wouldn't have known that his bank had an issue with it. So I, I, we, we can see what we can find out of that really, if that was what happened, but that, for banking, that seems very unusual to me that we would, once we got the money into our account, we would not have known, our bank would not have known that the check was not signed and that his bank was not honoring it and we wouldn't have sent the money back. We got the money, we're going to credit it to his account.
Yeah.
And that's why it was investigated. When I came in that, that next day, when they, when Commerce called me and said, "We need to freeze your account and open it up a new one," I came in and talked to James's, and I apologize using James, I'm not for sure who his boss's person was, and she was very nice. She said, "Yes, this is very odd. We don't know why this happened." And they investigated it and that's when they said, that's when I got a copy of the check saying that it was not signed. I said, "But then why did they go to taking the money and then putting it back?" When my bank actually released it. That, that's where I don't understand. So why, that's why, why am I penalized for something that I actually did as a, as an honored citizen, to, to pay the taxes that I did in a timely manner?
So I have one more question for staff. Have we had, so you know, we've, we've heard not hundreds, but 50 or so, you know, of these, and you know, we've seen where people have gotten the receipt and, but then it says, "Failure to clear," but I have not seen where we've taken the money out. Have, have we seen this?
This is the first I've heard of it. And again, anything can happen, so you know, we're certainly happy to see what we can check with our bank to see if, you know, with the dates, if we can track it down to see if that did happen from our bank putting it back because they had a check that wasn't signed.
So, so Commissioner Johnson, when we hear these every week, he likes to go and do this big explanation of, yeah, so, so I'll, so he'll, so he can do a better job than me, but the only way we can approve these is if it's a fault of the county? So last week when we saw the check wasn't signed, you know, that's not a fault of the.
You just assume the money did not even come out of my account.
Yeah, so, so if, I mean, if he's saying that the money did come out, I will support her motion to reconsider so that way you guys can have a week to, to go back and at least see what you can find out.
On exhibit, what is it, B, it shows the account that it, money did come out of my account.
Can you, does it say, can you like print off when you come back?
I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
Attachment C, it's listed as attachment C in your packet.
Uh, yeah, no, but I was going to ask if you could find the, where it says that Clay County put it back into your account?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I don't think it printed it out on that page.
Yeah, no, I, I see where it says we took it out on 12/29, but I didn't see where it's, you know, anything that showed that we put it back in. So if you could, if you could bring that next week or whenever we rehear, it would probably be next week.
Yes, I can, I can probably pull that document for next week, absolutely.
And then Diana, you'll check with, or Barb or somebody will check with our bank?
Yeah, we'll check with our bank and actually, if you could give staff the date that it was put back into your account so that we have that information to provide it to our bank to see if they can track it down.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that, that, that's all I needed to know. I will support her motion to reconsider.
And I think, I think, you know, I think prudence just prescribes that we do it next week at the earliest. If there's some reason that staff needs more time, obviously we can consider that, but at this time, when we go for our vote, I will ask for consensus that we hear it next week if it is practical to do so. Commissioner Johnson, I have missed not hearing your. Commissioner Johnson, I have missed not hearing your explanation, because I agree with you wholeheartedly, so please, you may proceed. Oh, wait a minute, let me come back here. My buttons are not.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. So I'll make this short, but just so that you all know, none of us up here like the way this process works, because our hands are tied by the state. As far as I'm concerned, you know what, you're a taxpaying citizen, you've always paid your taxes on time, okay, so you forgot to sign the check, and you're late a couple days. I wouldn't care about that. And I wouldn't, if it was up to me, I would say, "There's no penalty. We like these people, you know? Keep coming back. We like doing business with you." Unfortunately, our hands are tied by the state. They only, only allow us to waive these fees if it's the county's fault. And so what we're doing, if you haven't noticed through these lines of questioning, is trying to figure out a way, hey, how can it be our fault? And I was, if you heard Commissioner Withington asking, "Well, where did you put the check?" And what he was getting at is, did you actually sign the, or hand the unsigned check to one of our employees, and they accepted this unsigned check? Because then we could say, "Well, it was our fault for accepting an unsigned check." Well, that didn't happen. You put it in a sealed envelope, you put it in the Dropbox.
Taped it up.
Yeah, our people never saw it. It goes straight to the bank. They don't even open those up, we already asked about that. They don't even open those up, it goes straight to the bank. So that's what we're trying, we're trying to figure out a way to help you, but we really, our hands are tied by state law. One of the things that might help is if in fact, my guess is, what happens, your bank sent that through, showed on your, on your statement that the fees were withdrawn, because they'll do that, they'll put a hold on, on that amount, but then realize it wasn't signed, and maybe take it back. Because I can't imagine the county bank sending it back. But I'd be more than happy to find out. If I might suggest, and I'm going to vote in support of reconsidering this, what I might suggest is, maybe you can get a letter or something from your bank, president or something from your bank that says, "Yes, we sent this money, it was sent back to us without us trying to pull it back," if that makes sense. And if that's the case, and if you can get a letter that says that, that would be helpful as well to show that, hey, it wasn't your bank, it was us or our bank that sent it back when you actually paid it, and you had the funds in the account to pay it. Does that make sense? That might help support the case as well. So I'm going to vote to reconsider, it means you guys are going to have to come back again next week.
Well, that's worth, we can get this resolved.
Yeah, I apologize for that. But again, just know, I think we're all on your side, state law's not on your side, and we're actually trying to address that. But I apologize you have to go through this, just for not signing the check, and you had the money there, and-
And like I said, if the money wasn't taken out, I'd say, "Yeah, that's my live and learn. I'm taking it out of my golf fund." But you took the money out.
Yeah, and the penalties and fees are astronomical. I don't think they're probably, but nonetheless, that's my two cents.
And by the way, I just want to point out that in support of what Commissioner Johnson has said, we, in fact, one of our main legislative priorities is in fact allowing the county to have more latitude in these matters, and we have been, I think most of us have probably been in communication with our senators and reps, our delegation to Jefferson City, to prevail on them, to give us a little more wiggle room on this. So that's kind of where that stands at the moment. I've got Commissioner Lawson, and I've got Commissioner Wagner. If, Commissioner Lawson, if you don't mind, I'll go to Commissioner Wagner, that way there's no one else queued up at the moment, and I'll go to you for your comments, and then for your close, and we'll go to a vote. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, and thank you. Just very briefly, I like a great mystery, looks like we got one. I'm going to be voting to look at this next week. I do want to share or express my agreement with what my colleague, Commissioner Johnson, said, because it is possible that your bank just did a hold and we didn't get it. But I've also got to reconcile, somewhere in there, we got a late fee for some reason, and so all of that has to make sense. But we can, we can approach that mystery next week, or whenever everyone feels comfortable doing it, but it's not a fair system, we all know that, you're now caught up in that. Don't know if we have good news for you in the future or not, but I think at the very least, we want to try to figure out what's going on, because there is kind of that chain of custody that goes from bank to bank. And I don't know, this is really for staff, I don't know if someone representing the bank that we work with can be here whenever we have this conversation, because I do feel like we all need to learn a little more about banking, and what happens to people's checks, because I have a feeling this will not be the last time we have a discussion where a similar sort of situation occurs. So I would like to at least make that request, if we can have someone from our institution come here, or else I may need to be institutionalized if we have this come back again. So, thank you very much.
Yes, Administrator, you?
I was just going to say, we will make the invitation. I would not count on that happening, but at minimum, we'll try and get something in writing from our bank with regard to this particular situation.
Whatever we can do with your thinking.
I thought you were going to make a comment about institutionalizing. Commissioner Wagner, I wasn't sure.
I think everyone's already in that situation.
If, if there are no other commissioners who are wishing to make comment, I will go to Commissioner Lawson for her comments, and then at that time, she may, she may close. And for some reason, these buttons are not paying attention to me, but I believe you are now live, so you're recognized, Administrator.
I wonder sometimes, but I, I'm glad that everyone is in agreement, that we can go ahead and look at this at least. Diana will do her due diligence and find out. If you can get something from your bank as well, it's going to help, bring everything back next week, and then we will consider once again. So we appreciate you being patient with us, and we want to do what's right for you, but like Jay said, our hands are tied to some degree. So at least if we can find the good facts out, maybe we can get another one of these resolved to our people's satisfaction. That'd make me very happy. So do I make a motion that we-
A motion's made, you just need to say, if, it can be as brief as I close, or anything else you care to say.
I say, "I close."
Very well. In that case, we will take a vote on the reconsideration of 2024-51. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
It's passed, so we will look forward to seeing that most likely next week, but just keep us informed, Administrator, if you don't mind.
Right, we will put it on form next week.
Very good, thank you. And of course, any information that you would like us to consider in addition, make sure you get it as timely as manner to the Administrator, so she has time to make sure it's included in our packet. Thank you very much for coming out this evening. Are there any other citizens wishing to make a comment on any issues? Seeing none. That brings us to our consent agenda, Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are three items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item is commission meeting minutes from February 1st. Resolution 2024-56 is approving invoice payments for Clay County from the period of February 3rd to February 9th. There are 215 invoices totaling $926,568.38. Resolution 2024-53 is approving a cooperative purchase service agreement with Bargreen Ellison Food Service Supply and Design's determined supply agreement for kitchen appliance purchases and installation.
Thank you. Is there a motion for this evening's consent agenda? Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion's been made for approval of the consent agenda this evening. Are there any comments? Seeing none, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Excuse me. That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on this evening's regular agenda is 2024-58. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-58 is consideration of the request for a waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to a county error by Russell Dubuque. Mr. Dubuque is here and would like to present his information to the commission.
Please make sure the green light is on, identify yourself, then you may proceed to make your presentation.
My mic is on.
There you go.
Good, that's the first thing. My name is Russell Dubuque, I like to go by Russ. I'm a travel agent, and I'm here to talk about another tax problem. I always wanted to mail the tax checks toward the end of December, and this year, I took them to the North Kansas City Post Office on December 29th. I dated them for the 30th, because I assumed that the checks would be postmarked and arrive here on the 30th, and they wouldn't be processed, so that I was able to make sure that the bank was, be able to cover them. Okay, well, it didn't happen. And nothing happened, as a matter of fact, until I received a not paid full invoice a week or so later. So I went to the annex and asked them, I mailed them on the 29th, and nothing happened. So I assumed I had paid the checks. Well, the very nice lady there and decided that she would pull up the information, and I discovered that the checks, excuse me, had, the envelope had been postmarked January Somebody at the postmark, the post office was not doing their job. I certainly deposited the checks on time, and then all of a sudden, I get this notice of a past due, and, which is not, not a little bit of money, it's, it's a lot, and I was fine past due. And so I, as soon as I found out that the checks were postmarked that date, I immediately went to the post office, the North Kansas City Post Office, and they said, "Oh, sorry, Mr. Dubuque, but the mail leaves our place every night." So that means that it went to the main post office, and somebody didn't bother to do their job. And that cost me the 400 and something dollars. So I would hope that you all would take this into consideration, that I, like these other folks, have done my job, did what I was supposed to do, and somebody with this wonderful post office service that we've got failed to do theirs. And I would hope that you all would help me with this.
Thank you very much. We will go ahead, and there are a couple of commissioners that have questions of yourself, and then we will ask staff to come forward to make their presentation. Commissioner Withington, you are the first on the list, you are recognized.
You're absolutely sure, you went and put it in the post office on the 29th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You know, we've, we've done this two or three times now. You know, we know the post office has screwed up other people's. So I made the motion for the other two, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve 2024-58 with the box marked "approved."
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-58 with the box "approves" being indicated. With that, we will continue our discussion. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, yeah, no, Commissioner Withington really covered what I was going to say and ask. I'm just going to make the motion too. You know, Mr. Dubuque, I'm sorry you've had to deal with this, it sounds like this is no fault of yours, and look forward to us being able to do what we can to remediate tonight. I support the motion.
Commissioner Lawson?
The only question I had is, this falls under the clause that you were able to find, right? That speaks to the post office being failing?
Yes, the statute clearly says if it's the post office's fault. However, the statute says that the postmaster general is supposed to give some kind of letter indicating that's the facts. I don't think we'll ever get that, but I think Commissioner Carpenter has said it very eloquently several times, that, hey, you know, this is, if they did their job, the taxpayer did their job, why do we hold against them?
Yeah, exactly.
And so I'm fine with waiving this as well.
Well, I'm good with it as well, yeah.
Are there any other commissioners wishing to comment or inquire of the applicant? If not, then if staff would like to come forward and, if they have any comments that they would like to put before the commission?
I don't know that staff has anything to offer. The information is in your packets regarding the date of the check and the envelope that was postmarked January 2nd, and then, of course, the applicant's indication that they mailed it at the post office, and unfortunately, the postmark did not occur until January 2nd. But we have no other information to provide.
Very good. Are there any other, anyone else wishing to speak on this? I see none, so I'll ask if any other commissioners wish to comment, and then I will go to Commissioner Withington for his remarks and to close. Any other commissioners wishing to address this issue? Seeing none, Commissioner Withington, you are recognized.
I close.
Very well. The matter before us is 2024-58 with the box marked "approved," checked. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on our regular agenda, and thank you very much for attending this evening.
Thank you.
Next item is 2024-59. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-59 is consideration of approving invoice payments for Clay County Prosecutor's Office for the period of February 3rd to February 9th. There is one invoice totaling $158.91.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2024-59.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-59. Any further discussion? Commissioner Withington?
Oh, I was waiting for you to call the vote, my bad.
Oh, that's okay.
Eager Beaver.
Don't get, don't get carried away now, I know it's exciting things, but, very well, if there's no further comment, Commissioner, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Next item is 2024-54. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-54 is consideration of a transfer between funds in the amount of $1,135 from the airport lease deposit fund into the airport fund. And Auditor Holbert is here to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Please proceed.
Yes, Victor Holbert, Clay County Auditor. Like the Administrator said, we have Resolution 2024-54. This is seeking approval from the commission to essentially close this fund. So since we're entered into the contract with the FBO to manage the airport, essentially there's no need for this fund. What it is, it is basically holds of deposits from hanger tenants. And once their lease is up, we essentially return that money, so it's this money sitting there. So since the FBO is managing this process, it makes sense to give any of those remaining funds to the FBO and close out that fund, and that's essentially what this is. So we have one last payment from what we've identified as the balances for those remaining tenants. There was an overage unidentified of $1,135 that I'd recommend that we move to the airport fund to keep in the rainy day reserve account, if that should be claimed in the future. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the auditor? Seeing none, Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2024-54.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-54. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
That brings us to the final item on this evening's regular agenda, that is 2024-55. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-55 is approval of the official Clay County zoning map as of 2023. Planner Spees is here to provide information and identify the changes in the zoning map for the commission.
Please proceed.
Shane Spees, planner for Clay County Planning and Zoning. This is our traditional zoning map amendment, or, excuse me, zoning map that we bring in front of the county commission each year. What it does, it shows any of the new subdivisions we may have done in 2023, along with any rezonings, as well as cities annexations. This one was approved, 2022 was approved on the same day last year. We have not received any comments leading up or during the planning and zoning commission meeting and planning and zoning commission voted seven to zero for approval for the 2023 zoning map. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Just as Shane, as a matter of expectation, since we are beginning to get to the end of our comprehensive plan, how does the zoning map affect that comprehensive plan, if at all? And will we see, will a comprehensive plan do anything to change the zoning map once it is approved later this year?
Yeah, so our zoning map comes from our land development code. It's our standard we go through with each year unless if we're getting zoning changes, which that should only affect future cases, like if we're getting any new zonings depending on whatever's decided. All the current zonings right now would stay what it is and would follow under those regulations. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. And I just want to add, the cop plan will, it won't change anything with the zoning map, but it will dictate what kind of subdivisions or what zoning is allowed in certain areas of the county in the future. So they will affect each other. So I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Johnson?
So, excuse me for my ignorance about this, but does this map?
Make sure this is the same map you're showing up there. Does this map show the changes from last year to this year?
Yeah, so it'd be all of the updated zonings from last year, just to reflect for the last year's zoning map. So we do this for the previous year.
The map before you reflects the changes, but if you're trying to do a side by side comparison, it's, I don't believe it's identified on this map.
Right. And that's kind of what I'm asking. How many changes have there been over the year, this past year? Do you know? Is it a lot or just a couple of changes or? No, this map doesn't mean anything to me. I can't tell what we did from 2023 to 24 to 25, whatever. I can't tell the difference.
So one with annexations, there's been two changes this past year, two different annexation ordinances that's been passed through different municipalities. And then we've had some residential zoning, nothing too extreme, I guess is.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So this map reflects, keep in mind, we just changed our process. So 95% of the cases that this map shows would have been, come before the county commission before. So this, there's no changes on this map that were not approved by the county commission or planning and zoning commission, but this doesn't show each individual case. We had roughly probably 60 cases last year that would have changed a rezoning, but it's nothing that wasn't approved by the county commission.
I would interject, I'm sorry. The only thing that was not approved by the county commission is land that was annexed from unincorporated area into municipalities. So that doesn't come before the commission. And so this map does reflect that, that identifies those areas that are now in municipalities versus being in unincorporated areas.
And so my question would be, what exactly are we approving then tonight?
This just allows us to put the, all the cases from 2023 on the zoning map. So we don't always, we update our internal map that we use on our computers every time we do a rezoning or when we get notified of an annexation. But this allows us to publish the current map, the 2023 map, on the website and in the planning and zoning office. It's really an administrative procedure.
Okay, so we're basically just approving the collective of what we'd already approved.
Yes, because the land development code requires that we bring this forward to you once a year.
Okay, perfect. You know, just for the record, what I think would be interesting to see maybe next year is the changes that, the collective changes that took place, particularly when it comes to the annexation and what parts of the counties have been annexed by other cities. So we can see how our county has changed from last year to this year.
So he'll pull that up right now, actually. So there were two annexations. The bigger one was roughly 385 acres at 112th in between Plattsburg Road and A Highway, part of the Montage Development that Liberty annexed. So that's the biggest one. And then there's a small one that's less than an acre, I believe, inside Smithville. Smithville annexed that very small piece of land right there.
And that, so the Montage one, the Clay County has no say so now. Is that, is that true?
That is correct.
And when they make it, when they do an annexation like that, do they even notify the surrounding properties or anything?
I don't know their process. We're working with the cities where they create a process to notify the county. So we're aware. So we're working on that, but I don't know what the annexation process is.
And municipalities do not have to do that, especially if it's a voluntary annexation. So if it's my property and I meet state statute requirements with regard to contiguous that I'm adjacent to the current corporate boundaries, then it's between that property owner and the municipality.
So I'll tell you the problem I see with that. And if you could zoom in on that. So that right there, that 112th street between Plattsburg and A Highway, that is a massive development if they go through with it. We're talking thousands of people. And the traffic right there on 112th Street, just west of A Highway, yeah, that's a main thoroughfare right now for kids to go into. So the high school is right there at the bottom of that red square. That's a main thoroughfare right now. When you open that up to thousands of more people living there, 112th Street, which by the way, my house is just quarter of a mile from there, or less, eighth of a mile from that annexation, it's going to have a huge impact, a huge impact. And that's county roadway there. That's, well, from A Highway, you can see that white space between A Highway to where on 112th Street goes from, where it turns gray, that's Kansas City. But that white area there on 112th Street, that's us. That's the county. That's going to have a huge impact on us, huge impact. And we have no say so in it. They're just going to put it in there and I don't know what's going to happen on that street if they're going to be responsible for any development on that street in the county or not. But that's crazy. And that's crazy that they can do that. And I'll tell you, as a resident who lives there, who should have been notified of that and had some kind of say so, and I was never notified. No one ever told me anything or any of my neighbors anything about it, which I think is absolutely ridiculous. And I don't know how cities can do this and have that impact on their county because that's going to cost, the impact on 112th Street alone between A Highway and the city of Kansas City is going to be huge, huge. It's already big right now just because of the high school, but you add thousands more people there. And if you look at the planet they have, when I say thousands, we're talking maybe 10,000 people coming and going through that area. I don't know how, I don't know what we're going to do as a county.
Well, we can certainly continue to have dialogues with municipalities about collaborating with the county, especially instances like this when there aren't our borders. And while I'm sure they're worried about their traffic on their roads, as they should be, we need to be at the table and hopefully work with them with regard to that. You know, I'd love to have some kind of, I don't know whether the state allows it, but collaborate so an impact fee for the developer, that the county actually receives some impact fee. Because typically, an impact fee is you're paying to help upgrade and deal with the roads that your subdivision, your development is impacting on existing roads. Well, that usually happens within municipalities, but when it's on the border, their impact, as you said, they're going to impact our roads. And so how can we work together? Because I'm sure there are going to be road improvements as that develops. Now, I'm sure it'll be over a long period of time. It'll be phased in, but when it's fully developed, you're right, there will be a significant impact to traffic on that road, that piece that belongs to the county.
And don't want to, you have what Liberty's doing there, but on the other side of 112th Street, on the Kansas City side, there's all sorts of development. You can see the houses there already, but all sorts of development are going on. And they use 112 to get to the high school. And when all those amenities are put in there that Liberty's putting in next to the high school, that new development, there'll be a lot more traffic there. And that little sliver, it's about a quarter of a mile that belongs to the county, is going to be hugely impacted. And that's just that one side. And I care because that's where I live. But then you have the other side as well. You have all the way around there. It's just a big concern to me and obviously you have not only roadways, but the runoff and all that kind of stuff that we talked about. So that just concerns me. And so I guess back to where we're originally, I would love to see these kinds of things on the maps each year so we can say, okay, this is what's changing from last year to this year. Just makes it a lot easier for us, I think. But thank you. I appreciate it. Commissioner Withington?
Commissioner Johnson, Kansas City will be improving their section of 112th Street. I talked to Councilman Willet and he called me about it and he wanted to know if the county was going to do their portion too. So, but my question, Jay asked most of the questions I had. My questions were about annexation. You had mentioned that voluntary annexation does not need to be voted on, but I was just curious if, say it's not voluntary and there's some name, or some lands that want to be annexed by a municipality, do those people get a vote in the matter? Or is it just the citizens of the municipality doing the annexation?
So your questions are more about if it's an involuntary annexation?
Yeah.
I would have to, I don't want to quote on what the rules are because that happens so rarely. Usually where you will see those happen is in like in the middle of that gray area that they're called donuts, right? And so everything around it is in the city, but there's like one or two parcels that are not in the city. And so then usually because of infrastructure and utilities, there will be a need for the municipality to have that be part of their corporate boundaries. So what the legal process is?
Because Carney and Smithville are kind of gerrymandered.
Yeah. And so it will happen. They'll end up getting donuts. And so usually what happens the first step with municipalities when they're donuts, they'll approach the property owner and, you know, make a case on why the benefit is to come inside the corporate limits. If that doesn't happen, then there is in the state law, a provision to do involuntary annexation. But it's pretty outlined about what that process is. And you're right, there are votes that take place, but I don't want to quote you the steps because I haven't done one in a long time.
Okay. I was just curious because the largest municipality in Clay County did an involuntary annexation back in the 50s. So I.
I do think the laws have changed about involuntary annexation since that and some an outcome of that, that the laws have become more succinct and procedural on what that process is.
Yeah, just, like I said, I know when Kansas City did that, Clay County back in the 50s, it was not popular with the residents of Clay County since they didn't get a say in the matter. So I just wanted to, I don't want to, I don't want to see that happen in Clay County. And so I didn't know what the rules were.
And that's how some of our cities in Clay County got formed is, you know, to prevent the annexation of Kansas.
Clay, Como, and Gladstone, all those cities formed to prevent it. So, okay, that's just all I wanted to, that's all I had.
I had a quick question about that because could you zoom in on the red section? Yes. Because, and I realize this might be somewhat rough, but I noticed there is, there are some roads there that are between unincorporated and the newly annexed areas. Where does exactly that boundary fall? Does it fall short of the road? Does it go down the middle of the road? Does it take in the entire road? So, and that's impactful, obviously, as far as who is responsible for maintaining those roads. So could you, I guess, provide us some clarification on that and maybe tell us what the general practice is? That might be something instructive.
Well, we've had conversations recently with the city managers from the municipalities in the county, basically talking to them about the importance of if they're annexing, don't annex up to the right of way, but also annex the road. Because we've had that happen in some places where everything around it is inside the city, but they left the right of way for the county to manage those roadways. And so I think there, you know, after we've had some talks about that, I think there's more of a collaborative approach to saying, yes, if we're going to annex, we will take the road because they're getting the development all around it. And again, to Commissioner Johnson's point of if we don't have any avenue to get any impact fees or any fees to help offset the improvements that have to happen to our roads that are adjacent to those developments inside a city, then it becomes a burden for the county that not necessarily can we afford. So we all need to work together. And so I think the cities are a lot more receptive of working with us on that.
Because this was an issue that came up, I think around three years ago or so. There was a bit of a dust up over that. So that was why I was asking to get clarification, but also to see how much progress had been made in the way we can cooperate with municipalities to make sure that there's a fair distribution of responsibilities to keep those roadways maintenance. Because we, you know, they get the land and we get the road. It's a little bit tough to swallow some days. Commissioner Johnson? Real quick, has that annexation already taken place?
Yes.
So how long has Liberty owned that area?
Has it been since, let me see here. It was November of 22.
Then why did we just resurface 112th Street if it belongs to Liberty? You don't know that. We just resurfaced 112th Street, that annexed portion this year. The county did that. Why did we do that if Liberty owns it?
I would defer that to the highway department. Do we know? Was the annex completed, annexation completed in 2022?
Yes, they recorded the.
And sometimes, I think as Director Jones mentioned, sometimes we don't know about the annexations. They could occur and deal with at cities. And if they don't notify us, we don't know that that land has been annexed for some time.
That's so frustrating. Go ahead.
Carl Walter, Deputy County Administrator. That is correct. We're not aware of that. And we've had several conversations with City of Liberty and they don't notify us of these things. It's just a surprise.
So Carl, can you give us a ballpark of what it costs to resurface 112th there between Plattsburg and A Highway?
Right around $50,000.
By $50,000? Could we ask Liberty for that?
I was going to say, we could talk to them, send them a bill, see if we could get any, at least some kind of cost share on that.
Yeah. And the communication on these annexations, that's got to change somehow. They've got to, they've got to do better. And maybe we need to do better too, but basically they took over a part of our county, didn't tell us, and we repaved their roads for them at the county dime.
Yep.
Which that's just not right.
Correct.
So we, some things that need to be fixed.
And we do understand that part of it, but turn around and it's like it's top secret. And then it just shows up on us.
So I'm hoping that maybe you can get a concise figure on that for the city, for the county administrator and we can maybe ask Liberty nicely if we can, if they'd be willing to cover that for us and we can surface some more streets.
Yeah, yeah. You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. I'll bet you didn't think we'd be talking about this this long, did you? I think, but I think this has been a good conversation. I would just note a couple of things. It seems to me that really the only opportunity for the, because this issue with 112th Street, I think is a very good issue to point out, that gap that now exists, since I'm unaware of anything that allows the county to ask for impact fees that may be going on in a municipality, that may be either something we have to ask for or more affirmatively try to do our own de-annexing to the extent that we can make that pitch to do so. Because it seems to me the only way, something that goes on in Liberty, or for that matter, any municipality that borders the county, for us to get anything to upgrade our infrastructure for expected increased traffic is if they're coming forward asking for some sort of incentive. In which case then, depending on what the incentive is, and that may provide an opportunity for the county to weigh in because we have votes in those circumstances to then ask for those sorts of improvements. But to me, the only other alternative then is if we are working with the Kansas City and Liberty, going for some federal funds to our friends at Mark to try to get some money to fill the gap. To me, those are the only ways, at least in my mind, other than us just paying a lot of money to actually make those improvements. So I appreciate that there's some affirmative conversation. So I appreciate that there's some affirmative conversation, and that is good, and I think to the extent that we can be helpful, maybe on the elected side, providing some emphasis and providing some support for that conversation, I mean, I'm certainly up for that myself. But the cookie cutter approach to annexation presents all these problems all the time, and to the extent that we can have some tools to help us deal with that, certainly interested in that. So just wanted to throw those off.
And so just one caution, certainly, you know, if they are getting incentives such as a TIF, and go through the TIF Commission, that's one, but, you know, as you know, there are a lot of tools in the toolbox for economic development for municipalities of 353s, Chapter 100, that do not involve the county.
Correct, correct, and so, yeah, it really does, I mean, TIF is the most obvious one, but usually that's the one, because it can do the most, especially on larger projects, and so.
Okay, so I'll make sure this is spoken before I do.
Anyway, I think just to the extent that we can create some structure, I mean, you know, back in the day, it was everyone asking for some ability to weigh in on what Kansas City's doing. It seems now that kind of the reverse is happening, and so I just want to say, to me, the tools to cover these little donut holes are very limited for us, and so to the extent that we can support that staff conversation by perhaps having some elected conversation, I'm certainly game for, and I think is probably warranted, and 112th is a great example of that, because I think to do our improvement in our section, just eyeballing it, that's a couple $3 million probably to do that. So, anyway, for what it's worth, those are those comments.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah, as I think about this, I had to practically give my eldest grandchild to get that one road fixed the other day. $50,000 we needed, you know, take my blood, and let's get the road fixed. Anyway, here we go, and do this road for them. What is upsetting is not the fact that our guys didn't know it, that's a darn shame that they didn't, it's not their fault, but it seems that legally, and I would ask our council, is there no legal precedent that says when you're going to annex an area from the county, any city, Liberty, Smithville, whomever, that they have, do not have any responsibility to advise the entity they're taking that away from?
I guess I think I built a call to the notice requirements, but I'll tell you, the general provisions, the policy behind annexation in the state is they favor municipalities.
Is what?
They favor municipalities.
Okay.
Essentially, the counties are in the business of getting out of the business of roads and infrastructure, all the things that a city can provide. So, for the most part, so for example, in Chapter 71, there's a, 1987, there was a, so Chapter 71 says you can file objections to a annexation. In 1987, there's a court case that specifically said counties can't do that. So essentially, counties are disfavored from participating in annexations. They're a city-driven process, the public policy of the state of Missouri is that cities are better positioned to administer people and roads and all the utilities and all that, and that's how it's been forever.
Yeah, and that makes sense to some degree. I think maybe it's just a matter of, you know, a good partnership to say, guys, we're annexing this out of the county, you know, if they're not legally obligated, chances are it'll never happen, but, you know, just a kick in the teeth that we didn't know about it, that's all.
If I could say, in fairness to municipalities, we do get notification, right? Because, you know, it does come through, and it goes to our GIS, and we do change their corporate boundaries. The challenge for us is the timing of that, and how quickly we get notified. So it's not that the counties don't tell us, like this we did, but it's a matter of timing. And so what we would like to do is get more information sooner when it happens, you know, than sort of, you know, they wait a little while and then bundle it and send it to us for GIS. We have to know for taxing reasons, right? Because now that property is now inside the corporate limits, and so they, and so our assessor office, our GIS, does get that notification, it's just when is the timing on that for us?
Okay, so when did you say they annexed this?
November of 2022.
'22, and we would have been notified '22, '23, wouldn't we, by that time?
Right, I think we probably would have got notification, since taxes were already done, it would have been, you know, probably either very late in '22 or early in '23.
Okay.
And so we have to look at our processes too, to make sure that once that information gets to us, that our maps get done and updated as soon as possible, and that our other departments find out about that, right?
Absolutely, because if it was '23 when it was done, and that road was done...
In '23.
'23 as well, yeah, we could have saved ourselves some money there, yeah. And I firmly believe, as Commissioner Johnson said, we definitely need to see what it cost us, and we send them a bill. Now, they may tell us, take a flying leap, but I think that we deserve that, as hard as we fight to get these roads done.
I have two questions, and I'll be going to Commissioner Withington. One, I don't have very much optimism about, but I'll mention it anyway, and that is, we are still relatively young in our time as a charter county. I don't think it's there, but we have discovered as time has gone on that we have additional authority that we did not have as a statutory first-class county, so maybe that is a possibility. Like I say, I don't have much hope on that point, but you never know. The other is something that's come up, especially when we've talked about the idea of suburban-style subdivisions within unincorporated Clay County. One of the things I think, and I mentioned before, that I think would be constructive is our combining with the municipal governments, in other words, saying, look, if you're thinking about annexing this, then we should maybe be thinking in terms of how to make that process as easy as possible. Perhaps if we approach it in that way, rolled into that process, is we would then have maybe a sooner heads up as far as if they are going to do that, then we can act accordingly when it comes to those roads, and perhaps even at that point develop a partnership. But I think maybe one way to go about this would be a more constructive route that would say, we're trying to make sure that when you anticipate annexing, we make this happen in a way that is best for all concerned, particularly our citizens, and in that way that might help to, I don't say it would resolve these issues, but it might give us an opportunity to know sooner what was going on, and then from that point be able to appropriately do the maintenance and repairs on those roads as they come up. So that's kind of my two cents worth. Commissioner Withington, you are recognized.
I just had one question, and I wasn't going to ask it, but Commissioner Wagner said the D-word, de-annexation. So if you voluntarily annex, can you voluntarily de-annex if a development doesn't go through?
Yes, there is a process in which the property owner can approach the city to de-annex from the corporate boundaries. More so when it's a voluntary annexation, then there's really not the same burden on the municipality as there is if it's involuntary. So if it is involuntary and the city is forcing it to become part of the city, then usually there are requirements that they have to get water there, they have to get sewer there within so many years, and if that doesn't happen, then it's a very easy de-annexation, I think, for the property owner, for an involuntary. But from a voluntary, you can still do it, there's just steps you have to go through.
Okay, okay.
And I think the city council has to vote on that.
And is there any way that the county can de-annex land and make the city take it?
No, I mean, it's property rights. I mean, I defer to the attorney, but everything that I've been involved with when it comes to annexation, it is a property right from that individual, and they have the right to be inside a municipality if that's what they want.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, there you go. All right, got some green. Okay, I think we've made you stand up at that podium long enough tonight. I move to approve 2024-55.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-55. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, there's a new sheriff from town. We're moving on now to, that concludes our regular agenda, so we're going to move on to discussion items, and the first is the county drug testing policy from Human Resources.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. Kim Callahan, HR Director. Okay. All right, sorry. Okay, last time we spoke, we were talking about updating our Clay County Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy, okay? Since our discussion, we looked at other counties, cities, and even Missouri State policies, and it was decided to base our testing policy on safety-sensitive positions. This definition was provided by our legal counsel, and below is a safety-sensitive definition, I'm not going to read it. Each department head was provided with this definition, plus a list of all positions in their department, which they then returned to us with a list of the safety-sensitive positions in their departments, and this is what we want to move forward with in our updated policy. One thing we did this year, in September, we did a recognizing impairment in the workplace training. We had two sessions for our county managers. The instructor that we had, he had over 32 years of experience in public safety, he was a retired sergeant, and he was also a member of several boards, including the state DRE Technical Advisory Panel. We went over a reasonable suspicion checklist that's been provided to all our managers, and the policies and procedures were addressed at this time, and we'll do that yearly with all the managers. Basically, you know, Clay County Human Resources strives to hire and maintain highly qualified personnel to best serve our county residents. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Lawson, you are recognized.
Yeah, so our legal counsel looked at this, this new drug program?
Right.
Okay, yeah. I was looking at the one for the Clay County Sheriff's Office, was there any comparison made between the sheriffs and this document?
No, I mean, they're completely separate, the way they test. I know what they do, and the captains here, if you want to know their procedure, but it's completely different than what the rest of the county does.
So if I'm driving a road grader down the highway, which would be something to see, if I'm doing that, and I go off the road and take out a couple mailboxes, when that happens, do we then take that person and test him?
So you're saying it's employee, he's working, right?
Yes.
Yes. You see, if he has an accident, yes. He has to then be alcohol and drug tested.
And drug?
Yes.
Okay.
When I say alcohol and drug, yes.
And, you know, something that I thought about was, and I talked a little bit to the Sheriff's Department on this, on the first page on 1B, it talks about being under the influence of alcohol, marijuana, or illegal drugs. That kind of worried me too. You could be smoking marijuana on Saturday night, and then you come to work on Monday, that's still going to be in your system, but you may not be impaired, you know, you may be able to function properly because it's been days, but you're still going to test as though you were smoking. How do we know that this person wasn't or was, you know, on that day, and was impaired in any way? How do we test that out?
Well, and that's the issue that we haven't come across yet, but everyone's kind of waiting to see if something like that happens, and it gets addressed in the courts. I mean, all the other counties and even the state, they haven't changed their policies yet. Well, we're going to update them, you know, and here we are, next year, they still haven't, because it hasn't been addressed in the courts. And I talked to Kevin about that earlier, and it's something that hasn't happened yet, and when it does come up, you know, the THC.
Well, I also think the question becomes is, why are they tested, right? So those are work roles that's telling employees, you can't come to work impaired, whether it is alcohol, whether it is marijuana, whether a legal or illegal substance, you cannot come to work impaired. And so if they're tested, the reason then would be is why are they tested? If they're tested for reasonable suspicion, to your point, you know, that's why we've done the training, is then they are acting impaired. There is something that we have cause for reasonable suspicion that they are under the influence of something, and so then that test may validate that it may be current use of marijuana. The challenge that we're going to be faced with is your example of somebody being in a accident, and we test all our employees. If you're in a county vehicle, on doing county business, and you're in an accident, we always do post-accident testing, and so there's no observable behavior other than they were involved in an accident. And to Kim's point, that's the one that's going to be a challenge for us, that we're going to have to address when a situation arises.
Yeah, definitely. Do we drug test on a regular basis, everybody that drives a vehicle?
If they have a CDL that's required, and most of our drivers would be CDL drivers, but not like in the assessors department, we don't do random testing. You know, that would be, you know, where the managers are trained, does this person look, you know, is there a reason, and they'd have to go through the checklist? There wouldn't be a reason, since it's not required.
And I realize the random is good, but if you are, say, the Highway Department, and they've got commercial driver's license, and they're driving some big stuff, you know, and they're out under bad conditions and all of that.
And they are randomly tested every quarter.
Randomly?
Yes, we have a company that, all our drivers are put in their bank, and they go through and pull the names, there's a percentage, and every quarter, there are so many of them tested, and there's a few for just alcohol, and some both for alcohol and drug.
I know it's an expense, I do know that it's an expense to test, but why wouldn't we test everybody? Because the killer is, and it could be a killer, you've got somebody who's out there on the road, are we going to wait until they kill somebody or damage something pretty badly, and then find out? Why wouldn't we, I don't know what's the policy, you know, I see the policy, but I don't understand the random. I'd say we test once a year, and we test, maybe not always on the same month or whatever, but it seems like that's more responsible to test. I don't know. Commissioner Johnson, you've had your hand on stuff like this more than anybody else. What's a good policy, in your opinion?
So when Commissioner Lawson says, I've had my hands on stuff like this, let me clarify. Not personal use. It was law enforcement. I noticed one of the consultants you used was a DRE, part of the DRE program, Drug Recognition Expert Program. I was one of the original DRE instructors for the nation. Matter of fact, I brought the DRE program back to Missouri back in the late 80s.
You're hired. I need you this year.
Which, so, and along with those, I see listed in the policy is reasonable suspicion. It talks about basically some of the observations, the signs and symptoms you'll see of people under the influence, and it's different for different drugs, you know, your pupils can be dilated or constricted, depending on the drug, there's different things that can happen, and that's kind of what builds your reasonable suspicion, which goes into a question I was going to ask, and kind of dovetails into what Commissioner Lawson was talking about. Well, our supervisors have specific training on that, to identify, hey, listen, this guy's showing boom, 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 I got five things I can list right now that I'm observing. right now, that I'm observing in this person, that fit in line with marijuana use, under the influence of marijuana. That only gives me the reasonable suspicion I need to send them to get drug testing.
Right. And that's part of the, the, the training that we've had. And we have the reasonable, the reasonable suspicion checklist that's provided to all the managers, and if they see anything, there are steps that you go through. And at the very end, that's when they decide, well, yes, you need to be tested, they talk to the employee, they have to sign off, and then they have to actually take them. We call the clinic and, and take them to get tested.
And so what really makes this a challenge in today's day and age, and kind of goes along with what Commissioner Lawson is saying, is, is marijuana is legal, for the most part, in many cases. And we can't hold that against certain employees that want to use marijuana off-duty in illegal capacity. And that's a struggle, because you will still test for marijuana, depending on how it's tested, could be, could be more than a month later. And I'm not sure if it's, if it's urine, or blood, or hair, hair testing, or what it is, but depending, particularly if you use the hair or something, that could be tested a lot longer.
And that's a lot more expensive.
Right.
You know, we just do the urine.
Right. And there's different levels, also, when you're talking about under the influence versus just having it in your system, depending on how you test. If you test for levels in the system, you can correlate that with being under the influence to some degree. Just like with alcohol, you, you have a blood alcohol content of point zero eight, or whatever, that's the legal limit for driving, illegal limit, I should say, if you're over that for driving. With, with drugs, there's certainly, you can somewhat correlate, it's not as, as simple as that, because the law doesn't give a specific, hey, if you have this much in your system, you're under the influence, and it's illegal. The law isn't like that with marijuana or other drugs, like it is with alcohol. But we can still correlate to some degree, depending on what testing's done.
Yeah.
And that's where it gets kind of tricky, that, hey, yeah, not only is he having a system, he has an amount that's, that's, that's equivalent to, or comfortable to someone being under the influence at the time that this was taken, that he was tested. I tell you, this marijuana thing's a tricky thing, and the problem with marijuana is marijuana nowadays is so, so, so extremely potent. It's not like marijuana, and I said this before, I said this on the campaign show, it's not like the marijuana, the marijuana grandma and grandpa smoked years ago, where you're talking four percent THC. We're talking seventy, even ninety percent THC, in some cases, some of this hydroponic grown stuff. It's incredible. And it's not just, hey, I'm going to get a little bit of high, a little bit of buzz, I'm going to feel kind of mellow. No. This stuff can, can actually cause psychotic reactions, it can do a lot of things, a lot of bad things, depending on how much you take, and, and the quantities, and the quality, and that kind of stuff. So this is going to be, and I think it's kind of mentioned, we're kind of in uncharted territory here. Everybody's in uncharted territory here. Certainly, we have to cross the Ts and dot the Is the best we can, but, and, and I think this policy looks pretty good for the uncharted territory that we're in, but I think it's always, we're going to come to a situation, hopefully we don't, hopefully some other agency does, and we can learn from them. They come to a situation, hey, this isn't in the policy, and we're going to have to make new policy. We're working to figure this out. Maybe we'll name a policy after a certain employee or something. But, but nonetheless, it's, this is uncharted territory, and it makes it, but in looking at this, at this, I don't have any, any recommendations at this point, or any changes. I think this looks pretty good, the way I see it, and from my past experience, but again, it's, the struggle is, with the illegal stuff, that's always illegal, you find cocaine, or fentanyl, or methamphetamine, something in the system, that's an easy one. That's an easy, that's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
The marijuana thing, with the way the law's done now, that really makes it more difficult now, and we have to respect the rights, whether we agree with them or not, and I'll make it clear I don't, but we respect the rights of those people. I'm, I'm a big proponent of marijuana for medicinal purpose, purposes, not for recreational purposes, because the quality is so high, and the impairment is so high. And what people don't realize is that when the high wears off, the impairment is still there. That's the biggest, that's a bigger struggle with THC. You think, okay, well, I don't feel high anymore, but the impairment is still there. And so they go to drive a car, thinking I'm not high anymore, but you're still impaired. You come to work thinking I'm not high anymore, but you're still impaired, and you're using equipment. That's the real challenge with THC. So I guess I've said enough.
Commissioner, Commissioner Carpenter?
She was still on her, she just asked me a question, I took over, so I don't know if you.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure.
I have no idea what you're asking me, Commissioner Lawson, but I hope I covered it.
So is this answering the question you wanted to answer, not the one you were asked? Commissioner Carpenter, I'd like to go ahead and give you a chance to get in the conversation.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Cam and Kevin, everybody worked on it. So I've read it a couple of times, and I'm good with the reasonable suspicion, you know, I think it's a case-by-case basis, always has been, trying to have some sense of whether an employee is under the influence. And so, you know, that's just going to be maintained going forward, and to the extent that it gets complicated with, then you run the test, and if they've got a little bit of, you know, determining how much marijuana it is, and were they impaired at the time, hopefully it can be substantiated by, you know, some of these reasonable suspicion standards, and then, you know, could be terminated. My question is more around pre-employment testing, and, and any kind of random testing that may occur, that isn't based upon a concern of impairment, but rather is just a mandated test. So a couple of questions. First, on the, let's see, what, what page is this? On the second page, this safety-sensitive employees that we discussed, you know, shall be subject to controlled substances and alcohol testing. And then the next thing beneath that is pre-employment. And so there, it just says applicants being considered for higher must-pass to drug test. So just for clarification, when it says applicants there, does that just mean the safety-sensitive applicants, or does that mean all applicants?
Well, if you're thinking a positive for THC, what I can say about that is, a positive for THC will not automatically reject the applicant. It will depend on the position.
I see. So the, the drug test will happen for all applicants, regardless of safety-sensitive?
It does now.
Yeah.
Yes.
We have a six-panel, you know, drug that they're tested for, and option is, is to take that off. It's not going to reduce the cost. And there have been a couple of cities that have done, done that.
Yeah. I guess what I would like to do is get clarity for myself, and for just all the residents of the county, and potential current employees, frankly, and future employees, because to Commissioner Johnson's point, look, you know, we, we have different opinions on things that voters do all the time. I certainly have disagreed with voters many times over the years. But obviously, you know, we respect our democratic process, and in this case, the voters opted to make marijuana not only legal in Missouri, but put it in the Constitution as a, as a constitutional right. And so I, I do want us to be as clear as we can, at least, with current and, and future employees, as to whether or not they're going to be punished for marijuana use, both in the pre-employment testing regime, and then in any ongoing testing that isn't based upon concern around them being high at work. Obviously, if they're doing that, you know, they should be tested and then terminated if those suspicions are confirmed. But yeah, I'm, just more generally, do we, do we feel like we can be clear with, with folks who are applying, or who are currently working for us, whether or not they're going to be punished for marijuana use? Obviously not while working or under the, impaired, but on their own time.
Right. And I know our recruiter, when she tells them they're going to be tested, she does tell them what they're going to be tested for. So they go, and knock on wood, we've been very fortunate. We did retire four people out in our parks department, a couple of older people and a couple of younger people, and everyone passed with flying colors. So we've been fortunate, but.
So you mentioned earlier that for safety-sensitive, for non-safety-sensitive employees, that pre-employment testing, that shows a confirmation of marijuana, won't be used against them in the?
Right.
In the process.
Yeah, it will not automatically reject the applicant.
And then for safety-sensitive employees, it is automatic rejection?
Right now it is, because that's what we're going by, the safety-sensitive positions.
Okay. Thank you. And, and so I, Mr. Commissioner, I see that our counselor is?
Mr. Counselor, thank you for your.
Glad to hear that.
Mr. Counselor, do you have something to add?
You know, we're all grappling with the impact of the constitutional provisions. One of the things that I've, I've talked with Kim about, and that I would encourage, is that we kind of follow, I think that our Sheriff's Department has a, a process or a policy where they basically encourage folks who are, who come back with a positive, come back in thirty days, come see us again. So, so a big part of this is kind of, and I think a philosophical approach, is that a positive test is not a permanent black mark, at all. It is not, you are now disqualified from even applying. You know, so we have somebody come in, we maybe have a concern that they may be using at the moment, or they may come back positive, we might, we certainly wouldn't hire them on the spot, but we're also not going to disqualify them permanently, and we would encourage them, I think, to come back. Because again, we're trying to grapple with the impact of this.
Yeah, but just to be clear, if, if they're exercising their constitutional right to use marijuana?
Yes.
We're going to tell them, you don't get to get hired right now, but if you stop doing it for thirty days, then maybe we'll hire you then?
No, not necessarily. So again, for certain, for certain positions, I think we might do that. The, the safety-sensitive positions, or if we have reasonable suspicion that they're showing up to apply while intoxicated, while under the influence, which would be a separate problem. But for the, in my mind, someone who is not in a safety-sensitive position, who comes in, who, who takes the test, we don't have any belief that they're under the influence in any way, but they still come back positive, I don't think that's a necessary disqualification. That's, that's, that would be, my interpretation is, that person is, has not failed a drug test.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate the discussion, and sorry for taking up so much time. What, what I feel like is that I don't have clarity, and that, that means therefore the current employees of the county, over five hundred of them, although I guess half our sheriff's office, so y'all may have clarity. And for future prospective employees, you know, I just think we ought to tell them whether or not they get to exercise their constitutional right or not. If we're going to tell them they can't, then, then we should be clear about that. But I, I think leaving it, just my view, I think leaving it murky, and so that people don't know whether they can or not, I, you know, I, I just think that does a disservice to all those fine folks out there.
If I could, for existing employees, right? The current, take THC out of it, right? If we have an employee, whether it's reasonable suspicion, or for an accident, a minor accident, and they come back, and they're tested, and they're positive for whatever, and under the influence, it doesn't necessarily mean an automatic termination, right? It may be that there is, you know, some kind of discipline, they're sent to the EAP, they're put into a program, and so we try to work with them. So it's not an automatic, for whatever the positive would mean, that, that it is an automatic termination. You know, we try to work with the employee to, if there's any kind of substance abuse, to help, get them the help that they need, and so they can continue their employment. And so, however, there are some instances, depending on what the reason was, what the cause was, what the outcome was, and it was a poor decision, then it may be a termination. But it's not automatically because of a positive test that a current employee is terminated.
Thank you. And again, I want to reiterate, I fully support the, the language around the accident policy, and the way to follow up on accidents, and then same thing with reasonable suspicion. You know, obviously, it's complicated, you know, knowing for sure if somebody's under the influence, but if they're giving signs, they've been trained by Commissioner Johnson's program, then, then I, you know, I think proceeding with that policy, just like we've always done with, with folks who are potentially showing up to work under the influence, I think that makes a lot of sense. My concern is really more, is less around people who we have suspicion about, and who are showing signs of impairment at, at work, and is more about folks who aren't doing that, aren't showing up to work impaired, and whether or not they know whether they get to work for the county or not. And so even if we want to set aside the more complicated question of current employees, at the very least, future prospective employees who apply to work here, I would like to give them clarity as to what, what our policy is. And if we want to set the policy as safety-sensitive positions, if you test positive for marijuana, we're going to not hire you, we can make that the policy, certainly, and not have that the policy for non-safety-sensitive positions. But what I'm hearing is, we're not going to automatically disqualify you if you've tested positive, but that we might? That we might use that against you? Is that the?
If it's a non, if they're not under the influence, and they're not applying for a safety-sensitive position, my position would be that we would absolutely, it would not be a black mark in any way to their being hired, assuming that they otherwise were qualified, had the skills, had the education, whatever it is we thought we needed for that position, I, I would think that would absolutely not be considered.
Yeah, and to be clear, if they show up to the interview, impaired on drugs, of course, I agree, that person should not be hired. I, I want to be clear here, I'm talking about a regular person?
Yeah.
Who shows up to do their job application, and has at some point, or occasionally exercises their constitutional right to marijuana use, whether that person is going to be barred from employment. You're saying no, which I'm grateful to hear, I do think that would be the correct policy. Are we going to, we're not going to put that in writing, though?
But I, I just think it's really, I hate the idea of putting in writing that your use of marijuana shall not in any way restrict your ability to, to work for the county, when I don't want to necessarily signal that it's okay to show up, you know, intoxicated, and they don't know that.
I guess I don't understand why we keep going back to that. Respectfully, you know, just like with alcohol, right? We're not going to bar an employee from, if, if they ever use alcohol in their private time, we're not going to prohibit them from being unemployed. If they show up to work drunk, we're going to prohibit them, like, I get that.
Right.
I get, I get, we're going to differentiate between the two. The question is, are we going to treat marijuana like alcohol, or are we going to continue to treat it like an illicit narcotic, like it previously was?
It's, in the state of Missouri, it's a legal drug. It's constitutionally protected drug.
Yes.
And so I, I would certainly say that we will treat it as alcohol.
We will treat it like alcohol, on the non-safety-sensitive positions. On the safety-sensitive, we will continue to treat it more à la an illegal narcotic. Is that where we're going to?
I think that's, that's the parameter that we're looking at, yeah.
Okay. I, it's not my favorite outcome, but I, but I'm, I'm good with it. I, I do think, I, I guess I just hope, at least on the non-safety-sensitive employees, that we can, I guess, be as clear as we can about that, and maybe that's just in the application process, or what have you. I just think they deserve to know whether or not they get to work here as a legal marijuana user.
Sure.
And if they don't, then, but if they do, we ought to be able to tell them that, too, you know, give them some peace of mind when they go do their drug test, that they're not going to get punished for, for their legal use. Okay, I think I'm on, I think I'm on the same page. Appreciate it, thank you.
I had one question, I'm going to go to Commissioner Lawson, and that is, how does this interface with our ability, our liability insurance? Does this put us in the best position possible? Because certainly, we want to make sure that we, we are working in such a way that we don't have to pay, that the rules are set up to, where not only are they fair to the employees, but also that they are frugal uses of the, of the county's resources, and we're making sure that our, our rules, regulations put us in the position to get the best possible deal on our liability insurance. Could you kind of talk about that a little bit?
Well, because we have the policy in place, this is, this is to protect the county. It also protects the employee, but it also protects the county. And that's what they want to see. If there's a employee that's, that's driving and has a wreck, that's where this comes into, that we do test them for alcohol and drugs.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is these, these policies we're talking about put us, it was kind of a question I knew the answer to, but I wanted to ask it anyway, and that was that this, this allows us to still maintain our liability insurance without inordinate extra costs, and it is still reasonably, you know, reasonably sensitive to the employees. Commissioner Lawson?
Oh, I'm sorry. I screwed it up.
There you go, no, no problem. Like I, like I never do.
You know, I do not wish to be insensitive, but, but here's the bottom line. I'm going to come to the county and apply for a job. I go out and party Saturday night, say I'm a chubby person, and they say, the chubbier you are, the longer it stays in your system. I don't know if that's true, I've never, honestly, I've never smoked it, so I don't know what happens. But, and I'm a little chubby. So here's the thing, if, if that person's stupid enough to smoke five joints, and then come in Monday and apply for the job, and, and when they do, they test high, I don't want them working here. If that, they're that smart, not smarter than that, not to do something like that before coming in. The thing that I don't want to have happen is somebody maybe medically needs marijuana, or somebody that just socially smokes a joint. or somebody that just socially smokes a joint, and then one, and then comes in Monday, and there's still some, uh, residue left in their system, and it shows up. When we test, I know that there's a swab they can do, and it supposedly, and I may be wrong, but does it give the ability to say there's a lot, or there's just a little? That, you know, what, what can we do to not discount the people that are just socially having a smoke, and somebody that's a hard user, you know?
Yeah, I mean, this, our, our clinic that does our testing, you know?
I'm sorry?
Our clinic that does our testing.
Yeah.
The actual doctor responded to me when I asked him that, about, about this. And he's, this is his answer, "There's no good test to detect if someone is currently under the influence or timeline of last use." So urine testing is often positive around three days post-use, longer if chronic user. Hair, 30 to 90 days post-use. Oral testing is usually only positive 24 hours post-use, but also has a very low sensitivity for cannabis, so may not be accurate. So this was his response to me.
Yeah, oh, no, and that's somebody I would respect. I, I just think it's kind of a muddy area, and, uh, and I, I guess there's no real good way. You don't want to discount somebody that could be a valuable employee just because they use, but, because now it's legal, but, um, then again, you don't want a druggie, you know, uh, that's going to smoke while he's driving down the road. So I, I don't know, I don't know where that fine line is. It, it makes me a little bit nervous, but I, I, I would really, and I'm the only one evidently, but I would really like to see regular testing of our employees quarterly or something, and, and do it, but I, and I think everybody ought to be tested, I don't know, you know, everybody that drives a car.
Well, I can say that everybody passed their test to work here.
I'm sorry?
Everyone passed their test to work here, not you guys, you guys didn't get tested. But everyone that is working here right now has passed it, their, passed their test.
That's a good thing. I, I just think we need closer scrutiny on it, especially, you know, drivers, that's the big thing. I've got nothing else.
Commissioner Wagner.
Uh, thank you. Well, first let me address what I know everyone's thinking. Uh, Commissioner Lawson, you are not chubby, I know from chubby, and you are not it. But in all seriousness, um, so in my day job, I'm actually trying to fill four positions, three I'm very close to, every single one of them know you are going to get drug tested. And we do that because we have children that we do, uh, programs for, that they come into our, our building every day. Now, I do not have a children's program, but I was tested before I came in. I've had a situation where I tried to hire someone, told them you are going to be tested, and then failed. And so the, the funny part in all of this is you can tell people, and they think it's going to be out of my system, or whatever the case may be, and it may not be, but because we make it very clear that because we deal with, uh, part of our programs are dealing with children, and sometimes in, in very stressful situations, there is no ifs, ands, or buts. You don't pass, you don't get a job. I, I bring that up simply because I am trying to maneuver my way through what is a safety sensitive position for us. And I know in the, and what we have here, it says that, uh, those positions are held in the Human Resources Office, you get to know what they are. But it, it just seems to me that, um, a, a lot of this is driven by that particular issue. And so, um, you know, and I, thank you for bringing up the definition, um, but I think sometimes in answering some of the questions that we have, I do feel like in some respects is the, the, part of what helps answer those questions are, what jobs are we really talking about here? In my particular case, you can be anything, it doesn't matter, you're tested, you're positive, you're out. But I, I guess, not, not particularly knowing what are those jobs? I mean, by job, what do we consider safety sensitive? It, it seems to me some of that drives some of this conversation, but you got the, uh, the definition up there, if you want to reflect on that, I'll let you, and see where it goes.
Are you saying you'd like to see the list, is that what you're?
Well, I think it is important, uh, because it's, to me, this discussion is just kind of out there, kind of a lot of for instance, but it becomes real when we know, well, okay, what jobs are we really talking about here? And do we have the same level of scrutiny for one thing that may be sensitive versus another that may also be sensitive? But it may not have that same, uh, level of discretion, or may not have that same level of involvement with the public, and so on and so forth. So, I mean, I want to be sensitive to the fact that we do have a constitutional amendment, and it says what it says, at the same time, we have certain obligations to the public and to those who we interact with, and I'm just trying to discern, you know, if, if what we're going to be doing later, whenever later is, I'm assuming this is going to come in front of us to vote on, yes? So to me, if it's going to come to a vote for this body, part of what informs, at least my decision, is an understanding, who are we really talking about? And if it's not, everybody's tested, and everybody's held to the same level of scrutiny, it has various levels of scrutiny, then trying to understand that level of scrutiny helps me to discern, are we doing enough, are we not doing enough? Do we have to do what, you know, what, what our colleagues suggested? Or is it okay, based on how we may treat alcohol, that we can kind of follow some of those same lines of thinking and apply it to marijuana? And why don't, why don't I stop there, otherwise I'm going to go down a big old rabbit hole, I'll stop right there.
Okay.
You know what I'm asking?
Well, again, are you asking for a list of the positions? I mean, I can tell you juvenile, the juvenile detention department, the whole department, the safety sensitive, the whole department.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so I mean, that's where I'm going to, because it, it can be a certain rabbit hole to try to figure out what you do under every single circumstance, but I think what, what I'm hearing, and I'm distilling, is if we're not going to do everything for everyone the same way, like in the case I deal with every single day, then there is a matter of discretion. And I think what I was hearing from our colleague was, understanding the discretion that we would give for someone who either is coming in, or is here, but may be tested, and under what circumstance would they be? And, and to me, um, answering that question really fundamentally is about, what are these positions that we find may be more sensitive than another position? And therefore, we may, we may choose to treat it differently for that reason. Because once you start kind of dividing up, well, this is more sensitive to another, that, and you start bringing in discretion to the decision-making, then that is also a little bit of exposure, but that's a whole other matter. So why don't I start with this? What are those safety sensitive positions that we have, and how many of those are we talking about? And you don't have to tell me today, I just know, if this is coming in front of us at some point, I'd love to have that answer, to be able to better get to these issues that have been brought forward.
And what I could do is provide you with the list?
That'd be great.
Okay.
That'd be a great start for me.
We'll do that when it comes back.
Perfect, perfect, thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Withington.
So, you know, growing up, we were told that marijuana was bad, you know? We were conditioned to think that it was gateway drug and all this stuff, and it could lead to all kinds of different things. Uh, just full disclosure, I have a medical card. Uh, I do take THC, a little bit of a THC gummy to go to bed, I think it's better than Xanax and Ambien, so, uh, if you want to judge me on that this election year, go for it, but, uh, you know, I'm being 100 with you guys, so, um, you know, I think the problem though is, I think we're, we're, we're focusing more on use than impairment. You know, alcohol's just, alcohol's bad, but you know, uh, you go home, well, it's not bad, you know what I'm trying to say, right? Uh, if you, if you come to work drunk, it's bad, right? But, you know, you can go, go home and get wasted, come to work the next day. If somebody wants to go home and smoke weed, or take a gummy, or a sucker, I could care less. I'm, I'm pretty libertarian on that, right? Like, i- if, if it's not affecting their job, I could care less what somebody does on their personal time. Uh, and I get that we have to check because of federal regulations for the CDLs and stuff like that, but I just think we're focusing more on use than impairment, and, um, yeah, I, I could care less if somebody, like, I, I told Jay, I said, you know, a few Fridays ago, I had a really bad day at work, and I came home and I took a THC gummy, or a sucker, and I felt really good, you know? But, um, you know, got rid of my anxiety, but, uh, I didn't have to go to work the next day. I have to go to work the following day, and I was fine by the time I went to work on Monday. So I just think that we need to focus more on impairment than use, and, I mean, if somebody wants to do marijuana, or THC, or edible, or whatever form they do it on their personal time outside of work, and it does not impact their job, I could care less. You know, there's, we tried prohibition and that failed, and now people still go home and drink every night, you know, or whatever, so I just think we should treat THC and marijuana just like we do alcohol. And that's, that's where I'm at, you know, maybe I'm the lone, lone person, but, uh, yeah, I just, I just wanted to say I could, I really, I could care less. I think we, but we do need to focus on impairment and not use.
Commissioner Johnson.
Well, like Commissioner Carpenter said, that the law is pretty clear in Missouri on, uh, use being legal. I will throw a caveat in there, that, that use is still illegal at the federal level. Federal laws makes marijuana illegal, which is another muddy in the water. Uh, it's not enforced very often, but it can be. It's still on the books, it still can be enforced by the feds. Um, so I'm just throwing that out there, when it comes to making policy that may violate federal law as well. But yeah, to the point of use versus impairment, um, you know, impairment the night before could sometimes lead into, where it's alcohol or marijuana, could sometimes lead into impairment the next morning at work. As a matter of fact, I've, I've dealt with that several times in, in the workplace, where people come in with, uh, basically still under the influence, um, and alcohol, but the same thing could certainly happen with, with marijuana. Um, one of the things that I do like about this required testing, and it kind of goes in, it plays in both sides, what, what Commissioner Carpenter, Commissioner Lawson were saying. What I like, and maybe this is, this is, is investigator in me, is when you require this testing, and they come up positive for THC in a pre-employment test, to me, that's an investigative tool. It's, it's not illegal, they're, according to our constitution, it might be federal, but according to the state constitution, it's not legal, but to me, that's an investigative tool. To your point, hey, so and so, you knew you had a drug test today, um, could you not try and get it out of your system? Is it, could you tell us, when's the last time you, oh, you used the day of your drug test? Okay, are you addicted? Which, by the way, years ago, with low THC, was always marijuana's not addictive. We now know marijuana is very addictive, so are we hiring an addict? To me, testing positive, although cannot, cannot preclude, uh, hiring someone, nor should, based on our constitution, whether we like it or not, it is an investigative tool. Hey, do you have a problem? Um, tell us about your use. Are you going to be able to not use while you're at work? It also allows us to tell that supervisor, hey, although it's not illegal for them to use, they tested positive, you need to keep an eye to make sure that this isn't a problem in the workplace. And I think that's fair. You know, if, if someone's testing, to, to me, and, and maybe this isn't the correct thing to say, but, but like Commissioner Lawson said, if you're dumb enough to have a positive test when you know the test is coming up, it's like, well, how, you know? Supervisors need to know that, I think, and know that, hey, there could be a problem, maybe it's fine, maybe it's not a problem, maybe it's just, hey, he's a weekend warrior, he just gets high on the weekend, and he's fine when he comes to work during the week, nothing we can do about that, nor should we do anything about that, according to our state laws. But nonetheless, to me, it's a, it's, it's an investigative tool when someone is under the influence, even though the drug's legal or not influenced, but shows positive on the drug test, uh, when they come for pre-employment drug testing, to, uh, and ask them questions about that, to find out, hey, where are you at with your marijuana use, you know, how, how often do you use? Is this a problem, are you addicted? Is this going to conflict with the workplace? Do you understand our policy, you don't get to come to work high? You don't, obviously can't use that work, but you can't use, uh, you know, however long it takes for you to, to be not high, you know, ahead of time.
Right.
So to me, I think it's a good investigative tool, if nothing else. But to Commissioner Carpenter's point, just because someone's under the influ, or, I'm sorry, just because somebody tests positive for THC isn't necessarily an elimination. However, testing positive for illegal drugs is a different story.
Right.
Am I right?
Yeah.
Is that right?
That's a fail.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, enough said.
Uh, one thing that I want to point out is that, uh, we've done a lot of talking about the rights of the individuals who may choose to use, uh, different substances, but one of the things I think we do, uh, that, that hasn't been mentioned as much, but, um, I, it's sort of understood, but I would think it needs to be given voice, and that is, this is also a safety in the workplace issue, if someone is in fact impaired. Uh, and I don't think anybody here, I don't get the feeling that anybody says that impairment is, is acceptable. But if you're hungover or something like that, you, you know, you have the ability to, uh, under that, you know, less than 100% functionality, you know, people can get injured. Uh, the other thing is that it's, I, I think there is something to be said for the morale that it creates in the workplace. If, uh, if I'm sitting next to an individual who shows up hungover, just, just to use alcohol, they're not under the influence, but they're hungover, and I got to end up picking up the slack that they leave, and they're making as much or more than I am, I think there's a morale issue there. So I think we need to be thinking about this thing more holistically. How is it affecting not just the person who may or may not choose to, to use these substances? How does it affect the, the greater workforce that we have here, and what impact does that have? So I think that's something that is worth considering as we look at these policies. Commissioner Withington, you're recognized?
I'm not going to tell on myself anymore, but, uh, I do have one question. If somebody failed because, like, they took a, a painkiller, or, or, you know, they had some kind of prescription in their body, is there an appeal process to where, uh, they can prove to you that, that they may have failed because of a?
What the testing facility would do, they would contact them, and they would have to prove their prescription. So they work with them to see what they're on, if it comes up positive, they'll be able to see what it is.
Okay, because when I was trying to hire somebody at Cerner, we got notified by HR that they failed their drug test, and it turns out dude had a, um, some, something with his tooth, and he was taking a prescribed painkiller, and the painkiller was what came up, so they just had him take a second.
Retest?
Yeah, retest and with the, you know, with that notice, and he passed. So, um, so, so you're saying the testing?
Yeah, but they have a medical review officer, if they get a positive for anything, then it, they investigate it, and they ship it out to another lab, and they contact the person, and say it tested positive for, and see if they have the prescription, so it is investigated.
Okay, because, yeah, I don't want, I don't want anybody to not get hired or something because of a legal prescription, so.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and, and, and just, just to be clear, when I said I was, like, libertarian on that, it was talking about THC only, like, I'm not saying, like, meth, or any of the hardcore stuff, I just wanted to make that clear, because Jay, Jay said, you know, legal versus illegal, so, just wanted to make that clear. I'm, I'm fine with THC, but the hardcore stuff, I'm not fine with, so.
So just for clarification on Commissioner Withington's, um, example there, um, because of the process and the MRO involved, and certainly we want to protect individuals' information for HIPAA, we're not notified, so we, if it would come back positive, we aren't contacted first. Then the MRO takes it, finds out if it's, if it is a legal drug, that they have a legal subscription to, then it comes back to us as a negative test, um, because they were, you know, taking a drug that they had a right to do, and it's a legal drug, and they have that prescription. So we would never know, it would come back to us as a, as a, as a negative test.
Okay, that's, that's.
It would only be if, you know, they reached out to you, you didn't have the prescription, or yours, it was your spouse's prescription, which is not legal.
Yeah.
You know, those kind of things, then it would come. You know, those kinds of things, then it would come back to us as a, as a, as a positive.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. I, I, first of all, I just want to say, I, I want to be clear. I, I do think marijuana has potentially many adverse, negative consequences, both on the individual and potentially, uh, uh, on, on the community when abused. Um, and so that is certainly true about, uh, marijuana. Um, and it's true about alcohol, I would contend and the facts would as well to an even greater degree, uh, with regard to marijuana, um, or excuse me, alcohol. Um, and then, you know, Commissioner, uh, uh, Whittington's point, um, uh, there are all kinds of legal narcotics, um, under Schedule II like, uh, certain prescription opioids, et cetera, which are clearly far more addictive and intense in terms of the impact on the individual than, than marijuana. And so the point is we have to take these things on a case by case basis. Um, and by the way, there's all kinds of other human behaviors that are, um, you know, not necessarily drugs, right, that are, can be very unhealthy, uh, very negative behaviors. And so we have to take it on a case by case basis. The question is if and when and, and how should the government regulate these things? That's ultimately what the question is, right? Um, and that's where it comes into, uh, conflict or not, or at least, uh, libertarianism, right, with regard to this? I mean, you know, nobody's a full libertarian with regard to anything. It's just a matter of where you draw the line. Um, the voters of this state have drawn the line that marijuana is legal now. Um, just the bottom line where we're at with it though, we're going to treat marijuana equal to alcohol for non-safety sensitive employees or prospective employees. Uh, and we're going to, and this is where Commissioner Wagner's point, I think, is helpful. I, I, you know, I think delineating exactly which is which would, would, would and will be helpful. Um, and with regard to safety sensitive employees, we're going to continue in the application process to treat marijuana equivalent to illegal narcotics. That's bottom line, right? Okay.
That's, that's what we're posing in this. Captain Amy Agdarian, she wants to, uh, say something real quick.
Captain Amy Agdarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office, if.
Yeah, sure, thanks, yeah.
Okay, so I don't know what the safety sensitive definition or what the positions are, um, but I'm hoping to address what you're saying here. And I, and I like the way this, this discussion is trending, he's left now, but it, it's not the use, it's the impairment. And you can be impaired by a cell phone, you can be impaired by marijuana, you can be impaired by a fight with your spouse, you can be impaired by lack of sleep. So I don't think it's the use, the voters have made it clear, it's not, this is what the Missouri's voters want. So it's not the use, it's the impairment. And that makes it a little bit more difficult to address. But to the issue of safety sensitive positions, it's really nice living in a black and white world with limited discretion. I've been doing this for 29 years now and I like knowing my parameters. So the parameters for the sheriff's office are, this is still a federal violation. Use, possession, and, uh, by, by using it, you are in possession of it and it can take a long time, to your point, to come out of your system. But that doesn't mean that we're impaired, general county employees. Sheriff's office employees are subject to call back 24/7. So therefore for us, it's a very easy, easy decision that this is a violation of sheriff's office policy, which mirrors a lot of county policies, but can be more strict if necessary. So for us, it's a very easy decision to say that all 240, 35, sorry, employees of the sheriff's office are subject to call back at any time. Therefore, you are not, you are prohibited from use clearly on duty, but even off duty, you may not use. And we make that clear in the application process. I realize it's a little muddier at the county level for positions that are not safety sensitive, but perhaps that could be a guide for you as you're discussing. And I just needed to get up here and say, poor Kim, cause she'd been up here for a long time. All right. So now I'm going to withdraw and perhaps that can be an aid to you as you continue to discuss.
Thank you. No, yeah, that, that is helpful information. And, and I do think it makes sense to, uh, treat law enforcement agencies separately from, uh, you know, the, the general, uh, employees. Um, uh, and, and it's helpful information for sure. So, so I, I just wanted everybody to be on the same page. That's where, that's where we're at. We're going to do, uh, equivalent alcohol on non-safety sensitive and we're going to continue to treat it as an illegal drug with regard to, uh, safety sensitive. We're going to get some clarity on which is which. And bottom line for me too is just, I think it's necessary to be as clear with prospective applicants as we can, which job theirs is that they're applying for and whether or not, uh, the policy is going to impact them adversely in the hiring process. Um, I just think they deserve to know, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I see no more comments. Uh, Administrator, are you, um, do you require anything else from us? Or do you think you've gotten, have you heard enough on the subject from the commission on this?
We have, it's about as clear as mud as, as much as we're all dealing with it. So yes, we'll, uh, we'll do some fine tuning, uh, we'll come back to you. We'll also provide a list of the safety, safety sensitive positions. It is certainly clear in law enforcement and juvenile than it is in some of our other areas. Um, of course, CDLs, they're under their own rules. Um, but it's those other jobs that don't fit in any of those categories. And I will say, if you read that definition, we, we have taken it to somewhat of being broad. So it is, well, it is safety, it is also, we have fiduciary responsibilities, so we look at it from that perspective also. So, um, but all the departments have looked at their positions based on this definition. And so we have, we have tried to identify those positions.
Very good. Since there seem to be no other, uh, discussion, uh, to come up, we will go ahead and conclude that part of our discussion. And we have our second item, which is profit and parks profit and loss audit from the auditor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Auditor, for your patience. We kind of have you at the end of the list here. I hope that hasn't caused you any concern.
Yes, so Victor Holbert, Clay County Auditor, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, open up presentation here for you all. All right. So, uh, listened to a lot of the discussion in, in December uh, regarding interest in looking at a 10-year profit and loss for the Clay County Parks as far as the financial, uh, operations. I thought I could be of assistance to the county and, and provide some of that information. So that's really what this audit is here tonight. And I took the report that was in your packet, put it into a PowerPoint presentation. Happy to make that available as well, but basically just to kind of summarize the main points at a, at a higher level. Um, this is also available on the county website and happy to, you know, continue to, um, answer any questions throughout the presentation and at the end. So with that, uh, we'll dive right in. So beginning, I want to kind of start with some context of the Clay County, uh, Parks operations. Uh, essentially what you have, we have, you know, 48 budgeted FTE positions. So including, uh, you know, part-time budgeted positions is around eight, 10% of the, the county payroll of budgeted positions. When you look at this from a, you know, more of a net worth asset, capital asset, uh, context, you can see that the parks are around 14.4% of our acquisition costs at $212 million countywide and it's $30.6 million of assets that we still retain. That's how much we essentially paid to acquire those originally, is what that figure means. Um, now when we look at accumulated depreciation, it's still about the same, a little higher, 16.7% or, um, 17 million out of 102.3 million. So a little bit of a higher percentage in terms of the, the assets, um, that, that we can attribute to the park system. So I just kind of provide that context before we dive in into what would it look like as far as a financial profit and loss for the park system. So we begin with the revenues and what we have is over the last 10 years, so from 2014 to 2023, revenues have increased. I identified me essentially 16 main functions and looking at the chart of accounts, uh, and those you can see, uh, on the graph there. And essentially they've increased, um, to around, uh, at, in 2023, about $5 million. The highest year in that timeframe was, of course, coming out of the pandemic in 2021 at a, at a high of $5.4 million. So you kind of think about what this means as, as far as, as part of the entire county budget and operation. Um, and then the average over that 10 years is 42.3 million dollars, total of 4.2 million as an average. So you can see of those 16 categories, as of 2023, the highest contributing source or operation was, was the golf course at about 25% or a quarter. This has fluctuated, as I point out in my report through time, uh, between the campgrounds and the golf course. Um, so those are really, you know, two of the larger contributors to operations, to revenues. So when you look at expenditures on, on the flip side, those, uh, when you look at 10 years, haven't increased as much as revenues, which we could, we could see to be a good thing. Although I'll point out that expenditures have decreased, uh, quite substantially in recent years from a high, uh, in 2018 of 6.4 million, they're now down to also about $5 million in the most recent year of 2023. Over at 10 years, the total is $54 million and an average of $5.5 million a year. So we can see right off the bat, you know, this includes all expenditures in the Park Fund 240, the main Park Fund. Uh, we have, we do have a gap. We have, um, you know, roughly a $12 million gap. Now, we've made note about previous audits, how there are shared costs and that's what this really represents, is it's the total expenditures in this fund. And one of the main, major categories of those shared overlapping costs are the operation and maintenance category. Um, others includes things like administrative, uh, benefits. Uh, transfers out is a category we've used to previously pay some of our bond, bonded debt. Uh, we stopped doing that due to funding constraints in the most recent few years. But you can see the highest category, uh, over the past 10 years has in fact been operations and maintenance and because they support so many of these other functions, right? And it's at 42% of total Park Fund expenditures or 2 million, um, out of, out of 5 million. So with that, I wanted to look then at what are some similar, uh, you know, uh, operations? And there are 10 of them and this is excluding some of those shared costs. But if we look at them as best as we can, because some of those, you know, truly identifiable shared costings like, um, you know, utilities and even the benefits, don't really materially change this picture um, on a, you know, similar category basis. And on that, we see that most of these categories are in fact, uh, profitable on their own without some of those overlapping costs. Uh, they had their highest profitability in 2021 and lowest in 2019. Um, 2021 at $1.7 million and of course, the most profitable in '23 was also, uh, the golf course. But when we put this all together now, looking at those total expenditures, as, as I mentioned, we, we do see that there, there is that shortfall, uh, $12 million over 10 years. Uh, but at the same time, I will point out that the, the, the county has essentially subsidized through sales taxes, monthly regular sales tax allocations, not really on an as-needed basis, uh, the tune of $15 million. So we've essentially oversubsidized some of that park short fund, uh, by about $2.6 million. And this represents, I noted, 80% of the current fund balance in the Park Fund. So the Park Fund has grown, uh, at the year-end carryover, close to $3.5 million. And so most of that is, you know, truly, um, from the general fund. But on a more positive note, I will point out that 2023 showed the first operating surplus, about $100,000, uh, actually more revenues than expenditures in the last 10 years. So that's a positive thing, but it also says that we actually didn't have to subsidize at all in 2023 and we actually did, um, we're currently at about $450,000 a year in sales tax that we monthly allocate, uh, that we didn't have to do that. So that's, that's worth noting, but it's also, you know, quite a, uh, an accomplishment. And certainly in this entire audit, I want to say right here, I think is a good point. You know, this audit is to provide information, um, you know, really in a unbiased fashion. We, you know, truly appreciate the work of, you know, Parks employees and, and the activity they do. If you can think about it and step back, in fact, you think about $5 million a year. So, you know, 90% of that's four and a half million dollars a year of revenues from activities and work from county employees, those 48, uh, county employees. If that weren't here, the county would have had to subsidize even that much more, right? So it's, it's, I, I guess I want to caution us to jump to conclusions from that data alone. In fact, if you go to the county's financial statements, the statement of activities, you can see of, as we classify, uh, governments for financial reporting purposes, there's really only one type of category that's truly even profitable, so to speak, and that's, um, property, uh, valuation assessment and recording. And that's just because of the commissions that the county receives and, and performing that duty. Um, it actually had about a $6 million surplus or profit, so to speak, on an operating basis. You could also look maybe at treasury with an interest rates these days and, you know, the amount of interest, uh, treasury gathers. But, but certainly government functions don't often, you know, attribute profits. Um, but in this case, in 2023, uh, the Parks operations did in the Fund 240. But I do want to, uh, you know, move on from there, from the Fund 240 alone, because the route is we do have another fund, um, as we well know from our presentations before, uh, that supports the park system and that's the used tax, uh, Park Fund, Fund 302. And so it's interesting how you think of this. So in Fund 240, I should have mentioned, we do have a surtax allocation, it's around $400,000 a year that supports the park system. I counted that as Parks, uh, revenue activity. And the reason I did that is because the law actually states that surtax is to be apportioned based on the lost, uh, you know, revenue and proportion in 1985. I went back and looked at some of the history. We actually had a general obligation park levy in 1985. So that's why it's still allocated to Parks today, even though we don't have a park levy. Um, so I counted that as park revenue, but it is a tax. It's not a fee collecting activity or, or lease activity. Um, so with used taxes, that is truly a, a tax. It's not an activity-based, um, revenue generator. Used taxes under statute can be used by the commission however they seek to do so. The county historically used to split those three ways evenly, general capital projects, highway and parks. And now in recent years, um, we're, we're seeing more of a commitment towards the highway, uh, Fund 301. But going to this used tax Fund 302, we'll see that it's making up essentially 40% now of total Parks expenditures, um, 3.2 million out of 8.1 million in the most recent year. In the 24 budget, it's 30% with 3.5 million out of 11.7 million total. And so the revenue portion we're dedicating is 1.7 million of used tax revenue. The other part of that 3.5 million budget is just carryover that's, that's built up over time. Um, so when you add in expenditures in the used tax Fund 302 over 10 years, the theoretical loss grows from 12 million to another 20 million added to it, uh, 32 million is how you could look at it. And finally, this is my last slide, because I know numbers can, um, not be the most exciting thing. But, uh, there was a lot of the discussion to ask to look at not just these recurring annual operating expenditures, but to look at those one-time, um, you know, large capital expenditures. And, you know, um, some major sources of those include a 2018 certificates of participation that the commission refunded in '21 and shortened the, the debt duration. Uh, I went back and looked at that and $10.6 million was spent on park projects, uh, from those dollars. Uh, it was originally a $50 million, um, debt obligation. 3.5 million of that $10.6 was on the golf course. Um, in addition with the rescue plan, we've done a lot of good work up at our parks with that money, uh, as it relates to, you know, things like economic recovery, uh, water, drink of water and clean water infrastructure. 4.3 million of that has been expended. If I were to add that roughly 15 million to, uh, where we were at at 32 million, it could be 47 million of, of basically unsupported, uh, loss, you know, over those 10 years in the snapshot in time. Going forward, so we've looked from, uh, 2014 to 2023. Going forward, we know we have 10 million in debt. We pay about $900,000 a year out of the used tax Fund 302. And the reason we do that is because we're paying off the allocation from that 10 million in expenditures over time. And we also, through our five-year CIP, we've, we've identified some needs at our parks of about $6.2 million. So that's, that's what we face. But if you look at, again, the total assets, if we go back to the beginning, total assets, $17 million, net depreciated assets. We have, um, you know, a good, uh, 6 million cash on hand and here we're sitting at, you know, 10 million, 16 million in, in debt. It's a pretty good net position, not considering some of those, you know, allocated pension liabilities and things like that. So anyways, I wanted to provide that to you all because that was a discussion. I thought I could, um, you know, help do that. And, um, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions about what went into this or, or provide, you know, any other additional information you'd like, but hope that's useful and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Wagner.
Uh, thank you and, uh, thank you, Mr. Auditor, for the report, appreciate it. Um, as someone who prior to this, uh, spent three years on the Kansas City Board of Parks and Recreation, know a lot about parks. Um, uh, so just a comment and then I guess three questions that I have for you. The comment is, I, I do get nervous when we start talking about this in the way of profit and loss, because that suggests a business aspect that, as you pointed out a little bit earlier in your presentation, um, there's really only. earlier in your presentation, there's really only a couple of things that we do in the county that actually makes a profit. And so I want to recognize the public purpose with our system, just as we would with our roads and other aspects of what the county does. And so I just get nervous when we use that kind of terminology. But onto the questions. So I was curious on what you showed as far as expenditures is, were those capital and operations, just operations, both? I kind of want to understand what we call expenditure.
Sure. So yeah, that's all in, total expenditures, both capital and operating. You know, most of the operating now exists in the Fund 240, and most of the capital are in the Fund 302. There are some exceptions to that every now and then, just based upon financial resources. But it's also not the case that Fund 302 is exclusively capital. At the same time, there are some operations personnel costs there.
Yeah.
That aren't true, you know, asset purchases that we can capitalize on the books every year. It could be more of maintenance.
Sure.
Type expenditures.
Well, as an example, if I caught the slide correctly, the golf courses had kind of a huge dip as far as expenditure was concerned in, I think, 2019 or 2018, somewhere in there, and then it shoots right back up. And so I looked at that and thought, well, since that predates me, is that reflective of a capital expenditure and not necessarily an operating issue?
Yeah, and so I took the discussion, you know, from the commission in that direction to include everything, and you're certainly right. And I think I pointed that out in the report too, especially over 2018, 19. It wasn't so much golf course. I was looking more at the, well, the, you know, the restaurant, you know, built out at the Marina was a large capital expenditure that kind of really pointed out as an outlier in those trend analysis.
Sure.
Golf course, more of the capital expenditures seem to occur with those bonds, with the 2018 certificates of participation. Now, I didn't, I looked at Fund 240, the departments of Fund 240. You know, I didn't overlay, you know, the bond expenditures by department.
Yeah.
Most of the golf ones could be identified, because those are actual taxable investments to a bondholder, because it's for recreation, right? Well.
Well, you have users that are paying for the use of it, which kind of gets you into that kind of category.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Part of it as well. So I think, so, but I mean, you could do that for golf course alone, where you look at 10 years on this set, it was like 700,000. You know, Commissioner Carpenter had a good point on that previous meeting, it's basically a break even over that timeframe.
Yeah.
But then if you add in that 3 million or so of one-time capital expenditures.
Right.
That's where, that's what I see.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I wanted to get to, is just to note that you may have a very unprofitable year, but that may be because you are making now a capital investment into the facility, whatever it may be. So just kind of recognizing that difference. Actually, your comment on assets was actually another question, because I don't recall seeing a list of assets. So just very generally, when we talk about the depreciable assets within the department, are we talking vehicles primarily? Are we, or why don't I stop there, just kind of what those categories of assets are that you, that you point out?
Yeah, and we could certainly give you that breakdown. So it is a lot of vehicles and equipment. It's also a lot of buildings. Buildings that we've invested in at Smithville Lake, I think, if I recall, would have been, you know, some of the largest category there, something that really kind of retains value over the, you know, depreciation life.
Yeah.
Something that would stay on the books for some time. Whereas, you know, equipment doesn't necessarily always do that, so.
Gotcha. Last question is really, and if this is beyond what you thought your scope was, I completely understand, but, you know, as you, as you look at the presentation and you try to evaluate, because we're always evaluating, is that a good thing? Is that a bad thing? But I almost view that as a comparable, and, you know, my experience with Kansas City Parks and Rec, much larger than what we're dealing here, not a very good comparable, probably. But just very curious, as you look at this, I guess the simple question is, is this good? Is this bad? And is it good or bad compared to what? So if you want to answer that.
Yeah, you know, admittedly, I didn't, didn't per se because of the whole apples, oranges issue.
Right.
You know, look at Kansas City, Platte County, or similar Missouri counties, for instance.
Sure.
But I think one way we could kind of conceptualize it is in terms of, you know, especially 2023, turning a profit is a pretty big deal, in my opinion.
Yep.
I didn't talk about a rating if I were to give a rating, but I would have given it, you know, a good, essentially, or I like to use a star system, so like a three or four star. On the basis that, yes, the county still subsidizes per se by surtax, by used tax, by, you know, debt rescue plan supposedly. However, on an operating basis, you're seeing a profit. And then secondarily, I would say, let's conceptualize that in terms of percentage of the county budget and financial operation. So if we're talking about, you know, a $5 million spend on, you know, what, $120 million operating budget or so, is that, is that, you know, so much to ask? And then, and then again, kind of what I mentioned about the revenues that we don't have to subsidize.
Right.
Now we're down to $450,000. We used to allocate a lot more sales tax to the park system.
Right.
And now we're in a strong position from a fund balance, from reserves, that we can cover some upcoming expenses if need be.
Probably on a capex side or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, and so I guess those are kind of some thoughts on that. But no, I didn't really compare to other yardage or systems.
Totally fine, totally fine. I might just say in closing, number one, I appreciate the work and what you've got here. It's great. It just reminds me of some conversation we had during our budget conversation about how perhaps, how do we, how do we separate some things into their component business units to better look at them? Golf courses are natural. But I'll just stop there, and again, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Whittington.
I just want to say thanks for putting this together. This is, this is exactly what I was looking for when I asked if we could get something like this, so appreciate you taking the time to do that. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, great information. I really appreciate this. I had one question. I noticed on the employees, number of employees.
Yeah.
In 2020, we had 59, 2022, we had 48, that's a drop of 19% or 11 employees. What was that attributed to? Is that the Rangers or? Do you know what that's attributed to?
I actually think you're spot on there. I think that that would be what it would be, you know, and those were absorbed by the sheriff's office.
Because we've had no other major changes as far as employees besides that, right?
Correct. We've not really cut any substantial jobs, but as you recall, just for clarification, the park fund actually had Rangers that were assigned to the parks. Right. And several years ago during that year, there was discussion with the sheriff, and so the Rangers moved underneath the sheriff, and so we lost those FTEs. And they went to the sheriff's department.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions of the auditor? Once again, an excellent report. You always do a great job on giving us the information that we need to have to be able to go forward with, so thank you very much for that. And unless there's any other questions or comments, that will conclude this discussion item, which brings us to county administrator comments.
I just have one item, well, two items, I guess. The first is that county administrative offices will be closed this coming Monday, the January 19th, in observance of President's Day. And the next commission meeting is next Thursday, the 22nd, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much. That brings us to commissioner comments. Let's start with Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you.
Excuse me, let me put you on. There you are.
No, thank you. Just a couple of things, and it's about yesterday. I appreciate all of those who went down to downtown Kansas City to bask in the glory of our chiefs who proved once again the championship caliber that they had. But as we also know, something that was directly opposite occurred and resulted in a fatality in many who were injured. I'm really speaking on behalf of the agency that I work for during the day, the Matty Road Center, because the person who passed was someone that many in our agency knew and whose brother, who is the executive director of the Guadalupe Centers, is someone that I personally knew. And the person who was, who was the fatality is someone that within the Hispanic community of Kansas City was very well known. And that community is, has come together to try to deal with what they have experienced. And so I did want to mention, for those who may have interest or need to participate, that on Saturday, February 17th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the Guadalupe Centers is hosting an open access for community support at their youth recreation center at 2641 Bellevue Avenue. That'll be in partnership with Johnson County Mental Health, AHA LLC and University Health for those who, I think like many, are struggling with what occurred yesterday. And so that resource is there, but I just want to say to the Lopez family and our friends at the Guadalupe Center, that no matter where you are, whether it's in the Northland or otherwise, we are in solidarity with all of you. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson.
Well, it was tragic. You know, there was so much enjoyment going on, and then all of a sudden, there it was. It's amazing, you know, in Kansas City last year, what did they have, 300 and some homicides?
Not quite that many.
Well, 280.
170.
Yeah, right around there, whatever. Too many.
Too many.
Too darn many. And, and you know, it's a darn shame that with all of our law enforcement that was there, and I applaud our, we had some people there from Clay County Sheriff's Department, and to all of those, they put themselves in harm's way every day in their job. That really came right hitting us in the face yesterday, when we saw everybody running away and those guys running into it, and successfully got the people apprehended that were responsible. The one thing that angered me was that right away, I shouldn't say this, but I can't help myself, right away, the mayor started talking about the guns, the guns. I would be willing to bet that every one of those guns that they found, not one of them was obtained legally. So you don't take away from the people who are hunting or trap shooting or whatever it might be, are protecting their home. And they've gone through the, all of the procedures to have legal guns, and then there's the few that have to have illegal, so let's punish everybody, you know? I hated that it happened. I'm happy that they got them caught. I hope they prosecute to the fullest extent of the law. What a waste to that lovely young woman to have been killed, doing nothing, just happened to be in crossfire, and all the kids that were hurt. Gee, that ripped my heart out. It's just such a shame. This is such a really good city. These gentlemen really put it all on the line and brought us home another trophy, and it was such a joy, and for it to all go down the drain because of a few thugs, it's just a darn shame. But I think Kansas City's strong, Clay County, Jackson County, all pulled together to make it right, and hopefully we'll do it again next year, and we'll have another parade, and there won't be a problem. So God bless all of them.
Commissioner Whittington. Commissioner Tom Carpenter, I'm sorry, I keep thinking, I'm a bit too much peripheral of you going. Apologize. Commissioner Carpenter, would you like to make a comment?
Not much, other than to, you know, keep, in addition to Ms. Lopez, all the children who got shot, their parents, their families, and all the other kids who were there who went running for their lives and will live with this experience for the rest of their lives. It's tragedy, and good to keep them near thoughts in person.
Mr. Thompson. Mr. Johnson. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Thank you. Yes, sir. So along those same lines, there's been a lot of accolades, a lot of shout outs to the chiefs over the past week or so. I'd like to give some accolades to the chief, Stacy Graves, who's the chief of the Kansas City Police Department. She was thrust into a position yesterday where she is leading not only the Kansas City Police Department, but a multi-agency investigation into what you guys all saw on TV. That's quite a position to be in, and it's, I think, needed at that position is leadership and someone with a, what I like to call a steady hand on the tiller, just to keep things moving in the right direction and be that face of the organization, and in this case, organizations in this investigation. And by all accounts, from what I've seen so far, and what we'll have talked with her about it, she's done a tremendous job. And it's not an easy job. And so I'd just like to give some accolades to her and for the great job that she's doing along with all the other law enforcement agencies that are involved. One thing I also wanted to add, and I meant to do this earlier during our waiver of fees, and I was wondering if it's possible if someone in your office, or you can have someone, or if you think it'd be appropriate for someone to craft some kind of letter to the postmaster, the post office, that could come from all of us explaining the difficulties that we're finding with the post office not postmarking things properly, and we're having to waive so many hundreds of dollars of fees, or charge hundreds of dollars of fees to people who, by all accounts, are mailing their taxes in on time, but they're not being postmarked at the proper time. And I don't know if it's appropriate to do that or not, but just a thought I had, if that's something we could do and maybe come back to the commission with that, you know, some kind of.
Good idea.
Strongly worded letter to let them know that there's a problem with the post office.
Well, and it could be, I'll be happy to craft something and send it out, and if you're all okay with it, then print it and you can all sign it. You know, one of the things we know the post office does is come April 15th, they are geared up and deal with to make sure that those payments get postmarked April 15th, so federal taxes, right? While, again, almost all entities that I know of, your taxes are due at the end of the fiscal year. And so, you know, it would be great if they could help all the taxpayers across the area do something similar as they do to April 15th and gear up for those last few days of people paying their personal property and their real estate late, not late, but the last minute, and so make sure they get postmarked appropriately. So that may be approach we want to say is, is there something that they could do that would be similar? So we'll craft something up for you.
Thank you.
Good idea. I do not find myself on a regular basis in agreement with our mayor on this one. I think he said something that was profound and I think was entirely correct and appropriate. He was mentioning as so many people were running from the scene of the violence to Union Station, that the law enforcement individuals of whatever stripe were the ones, in fact, running into danger. That was certainly a feature of the tragedy on 9/11, and that tradition is alive and well with our law enforcement and emergency responders. I wish the captain was able to stay. I would like to, you know, make that remark to her personally and make sure that our sheriff's deputies understand that we value them greatly and that we respect what they do. So the mayor rightly pointed out that these individuals are conspicuous by their bravery and their skills in doing their best to protect and when necessary to enforce the laws and bring those who are, who are creating a danger, bringing them into a state where they are not doing harm to any additional citizens. So that's something that I think is very much, very much appropriate, and I appreciate his comments on it, because I think he's dead, I think he's completely right on that. The other thing that occurred to me, and I was at church on Wednesday, and one of the things that was said by our priest was that this, events like this affect us, but they do not define us. And I think that is a, I think that was, I thought that was very well put. These things affect us, there is no doubt. It affects our psyche, it affects certainly our children and our society at large, and we are, we are certainly put under greater stress and greater trial because of it. But I think we need to remember that this, that violence does not define us. What defines us are the actions like those I just outlined, that the law enforcement individuals were expressing. What defines us is the individuals trying to help and protect one another. us is the individuals trying to help and protect one another. That is what defines us, not the brutal acts of a few in our midst, but the broader actions of ourselves as a society. And I think it's important, while this does affect us, and it is depressing, I think it's important to uplift those who did demonstrate bravery, courage, and a great deal of character, and make sure that that is how we define ourselves in this country, not by the worst of our society, but by those who are exemplary in how they exercise their ability to serve the rest of this society. So I just want to say that I think we all very much appreciate those individuals. And that is, I hope, going to be the focus, is uplifting those and uplifting those who are suffering losses and who are, who are most affected by this. We need them to be kept in our thoughts and prayers so that they may work through this and they may get through this. It's incredibly difficult, but I think that it is certainly possible that it will, it will make us stronger as we go through this. And how we deal with these issues is what is going to define us going forward. With that, unless there's anything else, we are adjourned.